Tenemos servicio de traducción. Si gustan escuchar la junta en español pueden pasar a la sala de atrás y les vamos a entregar uno de los dispositivos para que puedan escucharnos, ¿okey? Así que si alguien necesita traducción, tenemos disponible. Pueden venir a la entrada y les daremos uno de los dispositivos. Gracias.
Ahora reconvenimos de sesión cerrada a sesión abierta. Señor juez de la ciudad, por favor, denle una lectura de la sesión cerrada.
Sí, gracias, señora alcalde. El consejo de la ciudad está de vuelta en sesión abierta, habiendo reunido en sesión cerrada. Respecto a la cuestión A, una cuestión de litigio existente, todos los miembros del consejo estuvieron presentes. Señal general, pero no se ha tomado acción reportable final. Respecto a la cuestión B, litigio existente, notaré el registro que el consejero Fajardo se recusó a sí mismo y no participó en la discusión. Respecto a los miembros del consejo restantes, una señal dada, pero no se ha tomado acción reportable final. Y finalmente, respecto a la cuestión C, con todos los miembros presentes, se dio un update, pero no se ha tomado acción reportable final. Y ese concluye mi reporte, señora alcalde.
Gracias. La reunión especial está ahora adjunta. Es ahora las 6:05 p.m. y llamo a la reunión regular de San Fernando a orden. Llame por teléfono, por favor.
Miembro del consejo Patty López.
Presente.
Miembro del consejo Victoria García.
Presente.
Miembro del consejo Joel Fajardo. Vicepresidente Mary Solodio.
Presente.
Alcalde Mary Mendoza.
Presente. Todos los miembros del consejo de la ciudad en atendencia están físicamente presentes y ningún miembro está participando remotamente para la reunión de hoy. Señora policía de la ciudad, ¿podrías dirigirnos al pleno de la honourabilidad?
Sí, gracias. ¿Todos por favor levanten la cabeza?
La mano sobre el corazón y comience. Agradecimientos a la patria de Estados Unidos de América y a la República por sus fans, una nación sin Dios, invisible y inaudible.
Gracias, por favor, sientense.
En este momento, estoy pidiendo el aprobamiento de la agenda. ¿Hay una motion para aprobar?
Segunda.
Llame por teléfono, por favor.
Miembro del consejo López.
Sí.
Miembro del consejo García.
Sí.
Miembro del consejo Fajardo.
Sí.
Vicepresidente Solodio.
Sí.
Alcalde Mendoza.
Sí.
Motion pasa.
Alguien que quiera hacer una declaración pública, por favor, haga el formulario azul y envíalo al oficiero Capitán Chason, que está sentado detrás de la policía de la ciudad. El siguiente item en la agenda son las presentaciones. Presentación de una proclamación reconociendo el 9 de septiembre de 2025 es el aniversario de la California, el 175º, de la soberanía estatal. En este momento, la agenda es decoro en orden. Señor juez de la ciudad, ¿puede usted, por favor, leer el decoro en orden?
Sí, gracias, señora alcalde. Este es el adnominación de decoro en orden para el consejo de la ciudad de San Fernando. El consejo de la ciudad, electo por el público, debe ser libre de discutir cuestiones que confronten la ciudad en un ambiente ordenado. Los miembros del público que asisten a las reuniones de la ciudad del consejo deben observar las mismas reglas de orden y decoro aplicables al consejo de la ciudad de San Fernando como establecido en el manual procederencial de San Fernando. Cualquier persona que haga declaraciones impertinentes, derogatorias o slanderosas o quien se vuelve boisteroso mientras se refiere al consejo de la ciudad o mientras asiste a una reunión de la ciudad y donde tal conducta se dé cuenta de que ha sido disruptiva para los procedimientos puede ser removida de la habitación si el oficial presidente así dirige al sargento de armas y tal persona puede ser excluido de la audiencia más allá del consejo de la ciudad. Eso concluye la adnominación, señora alcalde.
Gracias. El siguiente item en la agenda es el calendario de consentimiento. ¿Alguien quiere elegir items para discusión? Si no, ¿hay una motion?
Oh, sí, lo siento, señora alcalde. Alcalde, lo siento, es un comentario público.
Oh, sí. El siguiente item en la agenda son declaraciones públicas. Señora policía de la ciudad, ¿tenemos alguna declaración pública para esta noche?
Sí, gracias. Este es el tiempo y el lugar para comentarios públicos sobre los items en la agenda u otros problemas de la ciudad. Si hay alguien en la sala de consejo que quiera hablar, por favor, haga el formulario azul ubicado en la mesa en la entrada de la sala de consejo y envíalo al comandante Chison aquí en el podium. Cuando su nombre sea anunciado para hablar, por favor, camine hasta el podium para dirigirse al consejo de la ciudad. Por favor, state voluntariamente su nombre y dirección y habla claramente y directamente en el micrófono. Cada orador está limitado a tres minutos. Individuals que usen servicios de interpretación recibrán seis minutos para asegurarse de que los que no hablan inglés tengan la misma oportunidad para dirigirse al consejo de la ciudad. Por favor, note que el interprete detendrá a los oradores frecuentemente para permitir tiempo adecuado para traducir sus comentarios tan de cerca y con precisión posible. Calladores que quieran hacer un comentario público en vivo, por favor, cerrad su stream de YouTube de la reunión de la ciudad ya que hay un atraso de aproximadamente ocho segundos y interfirán con el streaming en vivo de la reunión de YouTube. Cuando sea su turno de hablar, serán identificados anunciando los últimos cuatro dígitos de su número de teléfono. Por favor, entiendan que el consejo de la ciudad es incapaz de responder a las preguntas para cumplir con los requisitos de reuniones públicas y se refiere a no involucrar en ningún diálogo durante el periodo de comentarios públicos. El personal de la ciudad tendrá su información de contacto y será capaz de seguir directamente contigo acerca de tu pregunta. Alcalde, me gustaría notar que hubo ocho comentarios públicos recibidos a través de correo electrónico y enviados al consejo de la ciudad para revisar. Los comentarios publicados son parte del registro oficial en los minutos.
Y los primeros oradores que tenemos son Ricardo Benitez, Sabina Montez y Chris Richards.
Buenas tardes, todos. Mi nombre es Ricardo Benitez. Soy el CEO de Silmar, el presidente de la Cámara de Comercio hispano. Y estoy aquí para hablar sobre el item número ocho en apoyo al paro del circo aquí en San Fernando. Y estoy muy emocionado por eso, así que solo quiero ser parte de eso. Gracias.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Sabina Montez.
Buenas tardes, concejales y alcaldes.
Buenas tardes, miembros del consejo y alcalde. Mi nombre es Sabina Montez.
Estoy aquí para apoyar la propuesta número ocho.
Estoy aquí para apoyar la proposición número ocho.
Para el desfile navideño en esta ciudad de San Fernando.
Para el paro de navidad, aquí en la ciudad de San Fernando. La ciudad de San Fernando.
Con su apoyo, lo haremos posible un tiempo de celebración y alegría.
Con su apoyo, seremos capaces de proporcionar un tiempo de celebración y felicidad para todo el pueblo de San Fernando.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Hola, consejo, Chris Richards. Me gustaría comenzar primero dejándote con esta palabra en mente porque será relevante. Gateway, la palabra gateway. Gradué en San Fernando Junior High, a finales de los años setenta. Gradué en San Fernando High School, en 1984. Fui afortunado para ganar una beca atlética a la Universidad de Oklahoma y luego me transferí a UC Berkeley y gradué con un grado de licenciado en inglés. The gateway. El deporte es una gateway para nosotros, una de las gateways. Ahora soy empresario. Tengo contratos con el estado de California, sirviendo a adultos con discapacidad. He sido profesor en San Fernando, Silmar y Monro High School, así como un entrenador. Creo que nuestra historia y la introducción de la historia o reintroducción de la historia es crucial en cualquier forma y moda. Charles White, trofeador de Heisman. Puedes seguir diciendo muchas cosas sobre lo que tiene y no tiene, debería haber hecho y es por eso que la próxima generación, soy la próxima generación después de Charles, para asegurar que las cosas que ellos no hicieron en nuestra generación se hacen en esta generación. Así que estamos recopilando apoyo. Este es mi compañero de clase del séptimo grado. Hemos sido socios desde entonces y estamos aquí a cargo de la familia White para dejar a San Fernando saber que estamos recopilando apoyo para poder comenzar un museo. Sé que la escuela va a estar en construcción el próximo año, así que nos gustaría ser parte de ese plan de posiblemente tener un museo, empezando con Charles, y sabemos que hay otros grandes tigres que salieron de ahí. Gracias.
El siguiente orador que tenemos son Stefano Padilla, Angelica Estrada y Marcela Rodríguez.
Buenas tardes, alcalde, consejo, público. Stefano Padilla, a cargo de la Comisión de Gestión de calidad del sur. Primero de todo, me gustaría presentarme como nuevo representante de la ciudad y del valle y espero ser de servicio a la comunidad. Estoy aquí para anunciar que el Aqmd del sur ha lanzado dos iniciativas de financiación importantes. El primero es nuestro programa Invest Clean, que proporciona financiación para desestabilizar el sector de los bienes y para apoyar la implementación de coches de emisiones cero, infraestructura y equipos de transporte. Las oportunidades clave de financiación serán para la infraestructura de carga, que será para las clases cuatro a ocho. Estos son vehículos diesel de trabajo. El segundo es el programa de reemplazo de coches. El tercero es un programa de equipamiento de cargamento eléctrico. Y el cuarto es un programa de intermedio eléctrico. Para más información, visite investclean.org para más detalles y eligibility. El segundo programa que me gustaría anunciar es nuestro programa de piloto cero, que fue lanzado recientemente el mes pasado y esto ayuda a los residentes y a los pequeños negocios aquí en la comunidad para adoptar su emisiones de energía y sistemas de agua. Quería notar que el financiamiento está limitado en este momento. Es un programa de piloto y está en un sistema de primeros beneficios. Los niveles de incentivo son de 1,000 a 4,000, con más fondos reservados para los pequeños negocios y las comunidades sin servicios. Solo quería notar que como agencia entiendo que a veces cuando estás transitiendo a nuevas tecnologías hay un alto costo inicial, así que es por eso que nuestro equipo con este programa está ayudando a los solicitantes a maximizar los incentivos con otros programas disponibles. Para más información, visite aqmd.gov/czero. Combinen estos programas como una inversión importante en energía limpia y tecnología de emisiones cero aquí en la ciudad de San Fernando y la región. Y animo a los operadores de la flota, los negocios, los propietarios de la propiedad y los residentes aquí en la ciudad a aplicar pronto. Gracias.
Buenas tardes, honorables.
Buenas tardes, honorables.
miembros del consejo. Mi nombre es Angelica Estrada.
Angelica Estrada.
Soy la presidenta de la Cámara Mexicana de Comercio de Estados Unidos.
Mexicana. Aquí en los Estados Unidos.
Y estoy aquí para extenderles una más cordial invitación.
Estoy aquí para extender una invitación.
A una posada navideña.
Para un paro de navidad.
Estamos organizando con el propósito de conectar a la comunidad con los pequeños empresarios.
Estamos organizando con el propósito de conectar los pequeños negocios uno a otro.
Y al mismo tiempo promover las tradiciones, la cultura.
Y al mismo tiempo promover tradiciones, cultura.
Y darles una educación financiera para que tengan una buena planeación en el próximo año.
Y darles la educación adecuada para el futuro. Ahí, una educación financiera para el futuro.
Considerando que es un buen momento para unir a la comunidad.
Considerando que es un buen y apropiado momento para hacer que la comunidad se una.
Y promover la economía de San Fernando.
Y promover la economía de la ciudad de San Fernando.
Esperamos contar con su presencia el.
Esperamos que podamos contar con su presencia el.
El diciembre cinco.
Diciembre cinco.
En el parque Ortega, Rubí Ortega Park.
En el parque Rubí Ortega.
Y al mismo tiempo también.
Y al mismo tiempo.
Quiero comentar que estoy a favor de la propuesta.
Quiero apoyar la propuesta.
Del desfile navideño.
Para el paro de navidad.
Porque es importante.
Porque es importante.
Conectar a la comunidad.
Conectar a la comunidad.
Y celebrar las tradiciones.
Y celebrar las tradiciones.
Muchas gracias.
Buenas noches, distinguidos miembros del Consilio de la Ciudad de San Fernando. Soy Marcela Rodríguez. Hoy estoy aquí en el punto número siete. De la agenda de hoy, once. Del diez al veinticinco. En apoyo al Departamento de Policía.
En apoyo al Departamento de Policía.
La evaluación organizacional del Departamento de Policía de la Ciudad de San Fernando.
La evaluación organizacional del Departamento de Policía de la Ciudad de San Fernando.
Continuando con esto para que se lleve a cabo.
Apoyo a hacer que esto se enfoque. Muchas gracias.
El siguiente orador que tenemos son Doris Torres, Dolores Rodríguez y Olga Teragon.
Buenas tardes, todos. Estoy aquí a cargo de la empresa emprendida y organización de beneficio. CEO Celia Rivas. A cargo de la proposición número ocho, que es el paro de navidad. Nos encantaría que la ciudad de San Fernando nos ayude, nos acompañe y haga que esto suceda con la comunidad. Queremos asegurarnos de que todos tengan un navidad agradable. Sé que mucho de lo que está pasando ahora, así que creo que la comunidad necesita reunirse y estamos pidiendo que San Fernando sea parte de nosotros, que nos acompañe y nos patrocine y promover este paro de navidad para la comunidad de San Fernando.
Buenas tardes, señora alcalde. Buenas tardes, jefe del Departamento de Policía y cada uno de los miembros del consejo. Dolores Rodríguez aquí, y tengo dos peticiones especiales. Una es que estoy aprobando el número siete porque el Departamento de Policía está haciendo un trabajo increíble en nuestra comunidad y estoy aquí para decir, por favor, aproben cualquier cosa que pidan el número siete. Son increíbles. Y dos es considerar dos sobre el paro de navidad porque en nuestra comunidad cuando nuestra familia está juntos es una alegría increíble. Creo que será increíble tener uno de esos en nuestra ciudad. Muchas gracias, Dios te bendiga a todos.
Buenas tardes, todos. Consejo, ciudad y también alcalde. Solo quería, y gracias por esta reunión que siempre tienen una o dos veces al mes. Y solo quería apoyar el item número ocho. Y solo quería ser capaz de decir que sí, estoy apoyando para el paro de navidad para que las familias y niños tengan esa reunión especial durante el año, que es solo una vez al año y sí, para que puedan tener ese momento especial y poder disfrutar del paro de navidad. Muchas gracias y Dios te bendiga.
El siguiente orador que tenemos son Emma Romo, John David Rivera y Dani Verulú.
Buenas tardes, estoy muy feliz de estar aquí. Solo, mi nombre es Emma Romo. Soy pastor de una iglesia, iglesia hispana, y creo que deberíamos invertir en los niños y el paro. Tengo nueve grandes hijos, ellos crecen en la iglesia y apoyamos cada evento que tenemos en el valle de San Fernando. Patty López, gusto verte hoy y a todos. Y me gustaría leer un verso bíblico y apoyo al item número ocho completamente. Creo que deberíamos invertir en los niños, los niños son el futuro. No hay nada más hermoso que ver un niño sonreír cuando compartimos juguetes y juegos y cosas y todos son tan felices. Solo quiero leer Romanos capítulo trece, versículo uno. "Deja que cada persona sea sujeto a las autoridades gobernantes, porque no hay autoridad excepto Dios, otorgada por su permiso y sección, y aquellos que existen tienen un lugar y un lugar de Dios". Solo quiero hacer un pequeño rezo de un minuto y haré el rezo en español si es posible. Padre, te doy muchas gracias por estar aquí. Gracias a Dios por todos los que están aquí esta noche y queremos poner todo en tus manos esta noche, Señor. Cualquier decisión que tomen para este paro, la pondremos en tus manos santa. Guíenlos, muestrenles, Señor, que es bueno invertir en los niños y son muy felices cuando tienen paros, especialmente en el momento de navidad. Gracias, Señor, porque sé que tú también, tú guiarías a las autoridades para hacer el mejor por nuestra comunidad, que necesitamos tu ayuda y también tú. Gracias, Jesús. Gracias.
Soy JD, trabajo aquí. El item once hace mucho en una sola. Cambia cómo se utilizan los fondos de área B. Termina un contrato de 40 años con la asociación de los supermercados. Reforma el comité adhoc y te pide que adopte una resolución afirmando las acciones administrativas de la ciudad sobre todo esto. Han habido problemas reales con la relación entre la ciudad y la asociación de los supermercados. Pero si finalmente lo corregimos, necesitamos más transparencia, no menos. El 20 de octubre, envié una solicitud de registros públicos pidiendo cualquier documento organizativo enviado por la asociación y cualquier motion MOU propuesta. Seis días después de que esa información fuera enviada, me dijo que necesitabas una extensión de 14 días porque el personal tenía que buscar, recolectar, compilar y examinar apropiadamente una volumen de registros separados y distintos. Mi solicitud aún no ha sido cumplido y está a tiempo el jueves. Así que aquí está mi pregunta. Si el personal dice que todavía no puede resolver los registros bien lo suficiente para responder a una solicitud limitada para leyes y una motion MOU propuesta, ¿cómo puede este consejo esta noche adoptar una resolución retroactivamente afirmando todas las acciones administrativas de la ciudad sobre este mismo tema exacto? No puedes tenerlo de ambos modos. Si el registro es claro, produzca los documentos. Si el registro es tan sucio que tarda semanas en desenrollarlo, entonces no tienes posición para pegar una resolución autocongratulatoria. Ninguno de estos construye confianza de la comunidad. Los miembros del board de los supermercados no tienen una imagen clara de lo que se está recolectando o lo que se está pagando. No hay reconciliaciones públicas para el área B, para el parque, para la mantenimiento de los supermercados, para las evaluaciones comerciales. Antes de que adoptes ninguna resolución afirmativa, debes dirigir al personal a producir y publicar reconciliaciones completas de todos los fondos pagados en el distrito de los supermercados. Lo que se ha recolectado, lo que se ha gastado y cuáles son los balances actuales. Si no nos muestras dónde fue el dinero, no tienes posición para pedirnos que confiemos en cómo se gestionó. Y finalmente, el futuro. Creo que una organización comercial de comercio democrática es el futuro del distrito de los supermercados y de cualquier oferta potencial en esta ciudad. Cada y cada negocio que forma estos corredores debería tener una voz. Las personas que abren sus puertas todos los días, emplean trabajadores, crean la cultura de la ciudad. Esos negocios deberían dictar el futuro. Terminar este contrato en este momento, de esta manera, antes de que los registros se produzcan, antes de que las reconciliaciones sean públicas y antes de que haya una clara estructura de reemplazo dirigida por los comerciantes, no es la respuesta. Recentraliza el poder en la ciudad y dice a los negocios que las decisiones sobre la ciudad se harán para ellos, no con ellos. Así que mis peticiones esta noche son simples. No adopten la resolución afirmativa hasta que todos los solicitudes de registros públicos pendientes y reconciliaciones financieras relevantes a los supermercados y a los fondos de área B sean producidos y públicamente disponibles. Si eliges terminar el contrato, parezca esa decisión con una compromiso público claro para colaborar con una nueva organización comercial de comercio democrática, con leyes, elecciones, representación real para que los fondos de área B sean gobernados por los mismos negocios que pagan.
Gracias, señor, su tiempo.
Hola, mi nombre es Dani Varela. He vivido aquí toda mi vida entera. Voy a llegar al punto. Después de que el consejo de la ciudad votó en contra de las ciudades santuarios, se deshizo del mercado exterior de San Fernando debido al costo, quitó 200, 200,000, mi Dios, de la Asociación de Supermercados de Decoración Navideña, mudó la elección de la próxima legislación de noviembre a junio, dando nuevos candidatos para fundar y encablar contra los miembros del consejo actual. Ahora se está disolviendo la Asociación de Supermercados de San Fernando. Tengo aquí cilantro en la nota, no, error. ¿Qué ha sido mostrado en los últimos meses no es solo cariño, es traidor? Vemos a través de tus palabras vacías, exigimos cambio, comenzando con que estás retirado del poder. Tenemos una oportunidad única de ser un ejemplo y prefieres cubrir tus bolsillos. Nuestras familias están siendo arruinadas. Necesitamos reforma y protección. Estamos gastando el 50% de nuestro presupuesto en la policía. La policía no debería estar haciendo los trabajos de profesionales de salud mental. No deberían entrar en disputas domésticas. Necesitamos viviendas affordables, transporte público confiable, una promesa para combatir a ICE, que has sentido que debe hacer, y un foco en los pequeños negocios, que has traído. Tu traidor de la Asociación de los Supermercados es un ataque a todos nosotros. Estos son nuestros vecinos, amigos, familia. Haz lo que puedas para mantenerse al día del poder. Está terminado. El cambio está aquí y tuviste tu oportunidad. Lo tomaremos aquí. No necesitamos coches policiales Tesla. Necesitamos reforma. Gracias por nada. Empecen a buscar nuevos trabajos, libertad de Palestina.
El siguiente orador que tenemos son Marisela Gutierrez, Betsy Artiaga y Antonio Escobedo.
Hola, todos. Mi nombre es Marisela Gutierrez y estoy aquí porque estoy muy preocupada por la seguridad de todos los residentes de San Fernando y la violencia que ha traído ICE a nuestra comunidad y la inadecuada respuesta de la ciudad. Especialmente, me gustaría solicitar estos tres items. Número uno, proveer un reporte público de la seguridad de San Fernando, resolución número 8377, proporcionando actualizaciones sobre la formación y la policy de los personal de la ciudad y adherencia a la política del departamento 413. Número dos, aumentar el apoyo financiero a 500 dólares por individuo afectado por la violencia de ICE. Sería maravilloso si la ciudad apoyara financieramente a sus residentes y mostrara la liderazgo de la ciudad en cuidar de su propia, especialmente durante los tiempos caóticos. Número tres, no nos sentimos seguros y es preocupante que nuestra fuerza policial parezca estar colapsando con los vigilantes. La confianza de la comunidad está siendo arruinada diariamente. Necesitamos implementar una junta de supervisión dirigida por la comunidad para investigar la cooperación policial con ICE y asegurar la seguridad local para la comunidad de San Fernando. Gracias.
Muy buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes, todos.
Mi nombre es Betsy Arteaga y vengo en representación de Beatriz Medrano, la CEO de Family Memorial Insurance Services.
Soy Arteaga y represento a Beatriz Medrano y Family Memorial Insurance Services.
Ya que queremos expresar nuestro total apoyo a la realización del desfile navideño aquí en la ciudad de San Fernando.
Quiero apoyar, expresar nuestro apoyo, apoyo completo al paro de navidad aquí en la ciudad de San Fernando.
Nosotros creemos firmemente que este evento representará una hermosa tradición que fortalecerá los lazos entre nuestras familias.
Creemos firmemente que esta celebración fortalecerá los vínculos entre las familias y la comunidad.
También impulsará la convivencia y llenará de alegría nuestras calles en esta época tan especial.
También ayudaremos a las buenas relaciones de la comunidad y también y también traeremos alegría a la ciudad, a las calles de la ciudad de San Fernando en esta ocasión especial.
El desfile navideño también es una oportunidad para compartir el espíritu de unidad.
El paro de navidad también es una gran oportunidad para compartir el espíritu de unidad.
Esperanza y solidaridad.
Esperanza y unión.
Que va a caracterizar a nuestra comunidad.
Que es también parte de nuestra comunidad.
Por tal razón, Family Memorial Insurance Services.
Por eso Family Memorial Insurance Services.
respalda con entusiasmo su realización.
Apoya felizmente la realización.
Y nos vamos a unir al esfuerzo para todas las personas que van a trabajar.
Y nos uniremos también junto con todas las personas que participarán. who will participate with this, in this event, to make it possible. Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Antonia Escobedo. Vengo a apoyar la propuesta 8 para el desfile de San Fernando.
My name is Antonia Escobedo. I am here to support.
Por la propuesta 8 para el desfile.
Proposition number eight.
Para que se realice el desfile de navideño.
I am supporting the Christmas parade as well.
En el área que es San Fernando.
And this, in San Fernando area.
Muchas gracias y buena noche.
Thank you so much and have a good night.
Next speakers we have is Ramiro Marrero, Ofelia Herrera, and Virginia Sandoval.
Good evening. My name is Ramiro Barrero.
Gracias a concejales.
Thank you council members. Thank you mayor.
Por darnos la oportunidad de expresarnos.
You've given us the opportunity to express ourselves.
Y es hermoso saber que esta bella ciudad.
Beautiful to know that this beautiful city.
Está organizando un parí que es de sembrino.
Is organizing a Christmas parade.
Es una oportunidad para resaltar la unidad celular más importante de la sociedad.
It is a great opportunity to let the people know about the unity of this important cell of the city.
Cuando las familias están unidas.
When the family are together.
La violencia disminuye.
Violence is going down.
El hacer este festival traerá mucha alegría y mucho gozo a esta ciudad.
In doing this festival, this parade, this meeting, will be, will bring a lot of joy to this city.
Y por eso es que estamos muy agradecidos con ustedes porque sabemos que están apoyando este proyecto.
That's why we thank you guys because we know that you are supporting this project.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Hello, good evening. My name is Ofelia Herrera and I'm here to support the Christmas parade. I think it's gonna be beautiful and I will need to help also. Thank you so much.
Good evening, council members. My name is Virginia Sandoval. To the members of the community present, I'm here and speaking on agenda item number nine. As a community member who has, is also a professional and a homeowner of San Fernando City, I make sure that my revenue stays in the city when I buy things here. So it is extremely important to me when I see that there has been no oversight on the follow-up or follow-through when it comes to our elected officials and the city staff, the police department, as what's going on. As of four months that this has been happening, there has been approximately two raids per month happening in San, at the San Fernando Home Depot. There has been trauma, there has been compassion fatigue, and at this moment, we ask for transparency. Transparency on the San Fernando together as to where are those funds happening? How many of those families have been helped by the $50,000 grant to Homes of L.A. or something? And the other one to Ignite of Hope, which was $50,000 as well. How many families have been helped with those grants? At the same time, we ask for transparency when it comes to the resolution of Safe San Fernando. There has been nothing put out in place for us as community members to be able to see and to identify what is the need of the city and the lack thereof of the elected officials and the people of the community. San Fernando is very aware, very well aware, the city, the police department, that there are active community members at the San Fernando Home Depot. We ask for inclusion, we ask for transparency, we ask for everything that is needed to be able to help the people that are actively being impacted for what is going on in this city. Thank you so much.
The next speaker we have is Brissa Magana and Ruben Lugo.
Good evening, members of our city council. I'm going to speak in Spanish and in English because I think it's important. And I'm bilingual, so I don't need a translator. Oh, okay, sure.
If you, if you were going to speak though, you would be subject to the three-minute limitation. But if you use a translator, it is double the time.
I'll wait for the translator. It's okay, I'll just go. I won't take more than three minutes. I just want to make a couple of comments. I noticed that everyone tonight here is saying yes to the parade, to the Christmas parade. And I too will also would love a Christmas parade. But how can we assure a Christmas parade? How can we make sure our families are safe? We have had eight raids in San Fernando in the last four months. And like Virginia said earlier, we're fatigued, we're tired, we're scared. A lot of people don't want to come out. I often have to help my neighbors to pick up their kids from school and go grocery shopping for them. And so, how can we have a parade? ¿Cómo podemos tener algo para Navidad para nuestras familias cuando la migra está en nuestra comunidad y está destruyendo familias y está destrozando nuestra comunidad? So I would just like for you guys to please think about that. I too would love a parade. My son is here. I would love for him to have a great Merry Christmas. But I'm broken and so is my community. And I ask you guys to please do something about these ICE raids. I'm just so tired. I'm just a mom. I'm just tired. I'm tired. And I ask you and I beg you and I plead with you to please do something when the ICE raids come to our town. Protect our families, protect our neighbors. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to speak on agenda number nine. My name is Ruben Lugo and I am a teacher at Artest Magnet located at the CCLA Caesar Chavez Learning Academy campus. Alongside other staff, I've been out every morning doing community watch to make sure our students are safe. Being located so close to Home Depot, we always question when will be the day that ICE finds their way to our campus, even if it's just on a royal. As a council, you voted down the protections that can come from being a sanctuary city. We as a community are asking you to provide transparency, support, and guidance not only to us teachers, but our students, our parents, and your constituents. Even consider reopening and recalling your vote against a sanctuary city. We need the help. These raids need to stop. As a previous person said, the community is tired. I'm sure you all there are tired. It's time to do something. And we need the support because the community alone cannot do it without the guidance of leadership. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull?
I'm going to pull item number five.
Item number five? All right. Is there a motion to approve items one through four?
A second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo. Vice Mayor Solario.
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Councilmember Garcia, item number five.
Thank you. I just wanted to request the council provide direction that, I have no issue with this item for this year, but as far as next year, that we also look into and consider JPIA. I know a lot of cities use them. And it would be looking into see what would serve the city best. So we would have two options. They can compare and report back. I don't think we need to make a decision for quite some time. So there's no rush on the item, but when it's time to start thinking about renewal, that the city can also look into that as an option.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo. Vice Mayor Solario. Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We're now on, the next item is administrative reports. And I'm going to move item number 13. I don't know if any of the Charles White family is still here. Is anyone from Charles White here? No? But I'm gonna just move this one forward, just in case they're still, they're in the back. But it's a family of Charles White. Sent me a, sent me an email requesting that, that, what they stated is, here's some background on it. And the family of Charles White, a 1979 Heisman Trophy winner and proud alumnus of San Fernando High School, has submitted a request seeking recognition for his athletic achievements and inspirational legacy. Mr. White, a native of the San Fernando Valley, remains a symbol of perseverance, commitment, and excellence, whose story continues to inspire generations in the communities of San Fernando, Pacoima, and beyond. The request submitted by Dr. Roosevelt White and James Gordon on behalf of the White family asked that Charles White be named, name be added alongside Kevin Williams' name in the gymnasium building and added to the name of the football field at San Fernando High School. The family believes this tribute would serve as a lasting acknowledgement to his accomplishments from the beginning as a San Fernando High School athlete to his college career at the University of Southern California and professional career at the National Football League. While decisions regarding school naming rest with the Los Angeles Unified School District, the family is seeking the city's support with a formal acknowledgement of Charles White, White's contributions to the San Fernando community and the lasting impact as a role model for current and of future students. And so what I did today, I did speak with the principal of San Fernando High School, Pablo Mejia, and the L.A. Unified Regional Director, it's Titus Campos. And actually, they, what they mentioned is that there is a possibility that the field already has a Charles White name added to it along with Kenny Moore. And they are open to, to possibly even consider a mural or a statue or a bust of Charles White over at the, at the, at the school. So they're open to it and they've, it seems like there's no really big issue. But we, you know, the council can support a letter that we can send either to L.A. Unified or the superintendent. And I'm going to be waiting to hear from them. They're looking into the, the information to see if it is on file or whatever information they have because they have to research it. But it does look good that they're, they're looking into doing something like that. And San Fernando High did win the championship in 1974 and 1975. And actually, in 1974 is when I graduated, so it was pretty good. So anyway, if I have the support, I make a motion to, if no one has any comments, anyone comments or questions, I make a motion to approve this item. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solario. Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item on this, on the agenda is discussion and consideration regarding continuing the community recognition meeting program. Ms. Kip?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'm with the council. We'll have our city clerk present this item. Julia?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. Before you tonight is discussion and consideration regarding continuing the community recognition meeting program. Staff is seeking city council's direction on whether to continue quarterly community recognition meetings in 2026 or adjust the schedule. And if quarterly meetings are continued, to approve the proposed schedule of meetings to occur on January 26, April 27, July 27, and October 26. Reschedule, also to reschedule the December 9, 2025 meeting to January 26, 2026, and receive direction on future event offerings and consideration of a budget to support continued success of the program. Here's a brief background. Historically, the city council included time at the beginning of regular city council meetings to present community recognitions formally acknowledging and highlighting contributions made to the community by individuals, organizations, and businesses. However, this led to delays in handling regular city council business due to lengthy presentations and an overall increase in recognition requests. In May of this year, the city council directed staff to implement a quarterly pilot program to hold special city council community recognition meetings rather than placing these recognitions on regular city council agendas in order to prevent delays in conducting regular city business. To date, there have been two special community recognition meetings, July 28, 2025, and on October 27, 2025. The next scheduled recognition meeting is on December 9, 2025. The first two meetings featured a combined total of 147 presentation of certificates and 33 presentations and was well-attended. At the conclusion of each meeting, attendees were invited to enjoy light refreshments, food, and dessert. This was made possible through staff collaboration, which included reaching out to and coordinating with multiple local businesses to secure food donations for these events. Additionally, ensuring the events run smoothly required support and cooperation across multiple city departments, including assistance with event setup, food service during the event, and cleanup. Staff has encountered a couple of challenges. Securing food contributions required staff to identify potential donors, initiate contact, follow-up, and coordinate logistics, such as delivery or pickup. While many businesses were eager to participate and generously support the event, their availability and capacity to contribute can be limited due to financial hardships, frequent donation requests, which may result in repeated requests to the same businesses. In conclusion, staff recommends the following. To reschedule the December 9, 2025 recognition meeting to January 26 to be closer aligned with the quarterly theme for consistency and planning purposes. And for calendar year 2026, approve establishing the following dates to hold the quarterly recognition meetings on Monday, January 26, Monday, April 27, Monday, July 27, and Monday, October 27 of 2026. And for the budget additionally, staff is seeking direction regarding budget considerations with the following options. Option number one, the city purchases food and dessert at $900 per event and $3,600 annually for four events. Option number two, the city purchases dessert only at $450 per event and $1,800 annually for four events. Or option three, continue seeking donations for both food and desserts, which requires a minimum of $300, $320 per event and $1,280 annually for four events. There is a minimal requirement of $320, which is to cover basic supplies such as refreshments, decorations, plates, utensils, potential dry cleaning of table linens. Minimum is also included in options one and two of the costs above. That concludes staff presentation and I'm available for any questions.
So we'll go around to everyone on this one. Councilmember Garcia?
I am in agreement with moving the December event to January. We just had one and it is in the, in the middle of the holiday season. I want to thank staff for this report. I don't think we realized how much time is spent on these events. So city manager's office, 16 hours, city clerk's office, 28 hours, public works, six hours, and all departments, eight to 10 hours. That's quite a lot. So I want to thank everyone for their time. And I would be open to, maybe two a year until we put it in our budget. One other thing I was going to mention is I didn't realize when we, I was in agreement, I don't even know if this came from an agenda item or from the city manager's office, but in our agenda item, we removed a couple items. One of them was, is this within the budget? And I was in agreement. I said, yeah, everything's within the budget. But now I'm realizing as things come up, not everything, not everything. But now I'm realizing as things come up, not everything, not everything is actually in our budget. So I think it's important that we know when we're approving things, whether it's coming out of our operating budget or coming out of our reserves, because that will help us make that decision. So I am open to that. But I think, I, I am in agreement solidly with moving the December meeting to January, because we just had one. Thank you.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Certainly. Well, first of all, as was stated, I'd like to thank staff for the incredible work that they've done with organizing these events. I think they've been a tremendous success, and the community has really appreciated them. I also think that there's been the extraordinary benefit of getting our meetings started earlier. Whether people come here to speak for or against us, everyone should have a right to speak. And so holding that process, or delaying that process for an hour, sometimes an hour and a half for presentations, I do think cuts into the, the democratic process. And one of the purposes that we have these meetings, which is to allow people to speak. So I think that continuing this as a separate event is recommended. I think that we probably should have it done twice a year. I like the idea of maybe increasing the number of certificates from three to five. I'm kinda confused by the previous slide that said 147 certificates were passed out, because wasn't it supposed to be like three per council member per event? So that part kind of confuses me. There should be a little more clarity on that. But if we could increase it to five, we would end up having 10 certificates total per council member, as opposed to having it over four events with three certificates where you're doing 12. And so I think that having 10 a year is still pretty robust and still gives us ample time to honor the many great community members who are improving our neighborhoods and the city and recognizing them. So those are my thoughts. I'm open to, you know, to any other suggestions. If there's a desire to try the four again, sorry, the four events for 2026, I was gonna say 2025, it's the second time this week I've skipped a year, or gone back a year. But if we're gonna try four events for 2026, I'm certainly open to that. It's not the end of the world, but I do think that for efficiency and staff time and being considerate, especially to all the people who have donated to our events, having this twice a year would probably be more fruitful for everyone. And so that's, those are my thoughts.
Councilmember Lopez?
Well, I'm just gonna echo my colleagues. And yeah, I'm really grateful for the, our staff to make possible these beautiful events. And I open also to have it twice a year and maybe go to option three, so we can spend less money and decoration and all that. I believe we don't need that. And yes, maybe we can do it twice, twice, twice a year will be enough. But not limited to the council that will recognize individuals, you know, for events or a special occasion. So that's my thoughts on this.
Vice Mayor Solorio?
Thank you. I'm open to, one, rescheduling the December meeting. I think that's appropriate. In terms of, does it have to be in January? Not necessarily. I know a lot of things also are happening in January. I would be more, you know, suggestible to three meetings a year, just because I do know that they do take up a significant amount of time, especially if we're doing five. But if we are doing five, I guess, across the year, it would depend, because in terms of your comments, Councilmember Fajardo, I don't necessarily think that it's three individuals that we get to select. It could be an organization, and within that organization, I believe we can, you know, if there's 10 people in that organization, then we're recognizing those. And I think that's how we got to the 100 and something. So I'm completely okay with that. I can see that we could probably, you know, decrease the timeframe in terms of like having one representative just pick up all the certificates. And having one representative maybe have a lower amount of time to speak and following through with that, if that's a concern. But I'd be okay with just moving forward with three and possibly changing the dates to spread them out across the year and having the last one prior to November, I would think. And in terms of seeking proposed budget, I'm also open to seeing where this, this upcoming year's budget's going to land, given that we did not allocate funds for this. So it almost seems premature to approve additional funds, given that we have so many other things that could use funding. I am okay with seeking donations from, you know, local businesses available in terms of, and providing maybe some sponsorship opportunities if need be. Those are my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, well, I, you know, in both of the, the events that we had, the ceremonies, I did recognize the El Grito, the entire group. I tried to shorten it, but, you know, they really enjoy coming in and bringing in the entire group to collect their certificates, you know, and, and they come in. I, even though I did ask for one person to come in. But I think the events have been really great. The community enjoys it. They feel really proud in receiving their, being recognized and within, you know, the entire council chambers and just the entire event is, is really beautiful and very touching. And so given that, I, you know, I do support having it the last event in January 26th. You know, and I, in terms of how many, I, I was thinking we were gonna continue. I was thinking of decreasing it to two, because the, the thing is, it's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work for staff, and I really like to hear from staff, because they do the work. We just basically just give out the certificates and, you know, and kinda sit here. But they're actually in the back getting food, calling the, calling, you know, the various restaurants to see who, who is willing to donate, you know, the food or, or the pastries, whatever we have. And, and that takes a lot of time. I'd like to hear from them. And then between, they're also preparing other certificates in between each of these events that we have. And we don't even know how many certificates are preparing in between. It takes a lot of time to prepare them. So do we know, do we have a number of how many of those they're preparing?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I do not have a number of the total number of certificate, but I could say that we highly support the two-per-year event, because putting together one event does take a lot of time from staff. We have to prepare at least two to three weeks in advance. We have to reach out to businesses and follow with them, coordinate with them to make sure donation comes in for the event. Like our last event, we actually had to buy food, because we couldn't get enough donation for food. Regarding the certificate, whenever we have these event, I know Julie Dorte, our executive assistant to the city manager, she allocate 40 hours, I think, two weeks of her time just putting together the certificate. That's me, she doesn't coordinate meetings, she doesn't register us for events, can't do community investment fund requests, can't do anything else. That's her focus, is, I told her, let's get these certificates done for the event. So it takes a lot of work and commitment from staff, but I know they did a really good job. The event always come out amazing, and the community really enjoys it. I do like the recommendation from Vice Mayor about, you know, we did limit to three certificate per council member, but we've been recognizing groups. So each group have a lot of members in there. So it is a good recommendation to just maybe write in, calling up each individual, that we just give the certificate to the representative and write and giving it to the individual to speed up the meeting.
All right.
Julia, do you have anything else to add?
No, I just wanna, you know, reiterate that it is a little, a lot of staff time that is, you know, involved in putting the event together. While the event is very successful, and I too enjoy very much seeing everyone receiving their certificates, we do work very hard to, to put that, put on that event, and many hours have been put into that.
You know, like I said, it's a beautiful event. It's been, you know, just amazing. And I think that we should provide some funding. I mean, if you didn't, you had to go out and purchase food. I know, you know, we don't, it's not budgeted, but if it's going to save time in her having to still go out and purchase the food, that we should provide at least some funding for each of the events. And maybe, you know, combine, do a combination, and at least she has, they know that they have some monies, you know.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Julia, can you put up the last slide? I think, to be clear, option number three, that is how much we're paying right now per event, with staff looking for food donation and buying supplement with some food. But option three, that's our bare minimum cost of hosting event, because we have to buy, like Julia mentioned, the supply, the decoration, cleaning, just getting everything together, that's the minimum cost. Option two, which is not seeking food donation, but still have our basic preparation, and we can purchase dessert or get donation for dessert. And then option one is the city paying for food and dessert, which is the highest option. So like you mentioned, we could continue to seek donation for food, but give us some funding to help supplement purchase when donation doesn't come through. But for now, what we have been using is our city council budget to pay the 320 per event. So we probably would be coming back in the mid-year budget for request to adjust the city council budget, because we have a city council budget for certain purchases.
Madam Mayor, I, it sounded like there, I'll make a motion for the timing. So I move to reschedule and not have the December 9th, 2025 meeting, and also to have two of these meetings on, one on January 26th, 2026, and one on July 27th, 2026.
And to continue seeking option three, which is seek donation food and desserts.
I second it.
Sure, yeah. If there was a, I didn't know if there was more discussion wanted on that part of it, but if we're ready to go forward, then yes.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Solorio?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is receive a presentation on the organizational assessment for the San Fernando Police Department. Ms. Kip, please provide a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Give us some time. I have our retired police chief, John Perez, from Pasadena, conducted an organizational assessment in the police department. He started that at the end of August, is now complete. And we have a presentation to share with the council and the community. Thank you. John?
Thank you, City Manager. And thank you to the City of San Fernando for having me here and allowing me to do this report. It's a pleasure to engage the council once again, and look forward to presenting this information to the community on the work being done. To begin, a little background on myself. My name is John Perez. I was a passing of police employee for 36 years, last half decade as a police chief there. I do assessments across the United States and leadership. Been to 35 different states and a few dozen organizations. I am a local guy, born in East LA, grew up in La Puente, and still live here in LA County. So I understand the fill of our communities out this way in LA County and the challenges that we have. So I begin this report by really giving the city manager and the council a lot of credit for initiating this report. These reports are difficult across the United States to make police departments better. So whenever I see a city manager, a police chief, and a council wanting these type of reports, there is hope for bettering law enforcement in the United States and really connecting the goals with the community. So I really give them a lot of credit for doing this. This assessment is focused on organizational culture. It's focused on really the, the accountability systems, the leadership and operation efficiencies of the organization. This report required the review of data analysis, policy review, staff interviews, focus group discussions, community engagement, and field observations. I spent time in the community, talking to different people at coffee shops and restaurants for a couple of weeks, really trying to understand the culture and history of the City of San Fernando. I'm very proud of a Latino-based community that really supports its police department and its local government is a special thing to hang on to. So it, it is, it is good. In regards to Chief Valdez, I was very impressed with the fact that he was open to these recommendations. He was open to the assessment. He was open to the assessment on his leadership, and he put things into place, which I'll cover in a few minutes, as the report was being written, which I very rarely see in the United States. Many chiefs wait for the report, they wait for it to die out, and at times, I don't see anything being implemented, and it's frustrating for me when that happens, and frustrating for the community, because we want change. We want police departments to keep getting better every day. So I was proud of that. Onto the next slide. Again, these are the things that I was impressed by Chief Valdez as we were doing these, this report, that in fact, we had ad hoc committees being created, weekly department updates, labor association engagements, and also prioritizing projects in the organization and internal leadership development workshops. One has occurred already. There's a second one being planned for December. Usually, police chiefs shy away from these type of workshops. I was very impressed that they put one into play and completed the workshop, and we got positive feedback. Had a chance for the department to unwrap some challenges, some issues on the table. Much like a family, to get better, we have to talk about the issues that we're having. And the San Fernando Police Department did just that. So a lot of praise for the chief in that, in that, in that area. Next slide, please. On that, we found strong support in the communities I talked about. Internally, the San Fernando Police Department members care deeply about the work that they do. I spoke to probably more than half of the department, and a lot of young employees from this community are very proud about belonging to the San Fernando Police Department, their desire that it keeps getting better and better, which will help your retention and future recruitment, which was really good. The department performed well in many areas of policing, community engagement. They did above average on their engagement with the community. Critical policing events from force encounters that they've had recently and other type of events. The outcomes were positive, and the performance by the officers was the place that you wanna be. Not that there's not corrections or some weaknesses to improve on, but I like the place where they're at today. There are some challenges. Events over the past 10 years here at the police departments that have occurred have caused a loss in confidence, not only in some people in the community, as well as some members of the organization inside that worry about the community reputation, worry about how personnel investigations have been done over this 10-year period, and also the executive turnover. There's been way too many chiefs over the past 10 years. The last functioning period of time where the chief was highly praised for the work being done at the conclusion was probably in 2010 to 2012. So it's been a while. This chief is putting a lot of things into place that we'll talk about, so we're on our way to getting there. We did find existing concerns regarding SFPD's reputation in the community. Some people were concerned about past incidents and concerned about having higher confidence levels of their police department, and they do want it to be, get better, and they do wanna see things being implemented to show strength with the police department. Next slide, please. There were positive signs over the last three years that this chief and his staff had put things into place for higher best practice accountability systems, also to develop other issues in performing better. However, with that, it could be critiqued that the pace was too fast and too quick, that sometimes causes internal issues of trust with rank and file personnel when you're making or providing new rules, new ways of doing things. There's a balance there. And the great part about this is, is talking with the chief, that he understands that. He understands that these things needed to be done based on the years prior to him being here and how investigations were done and conducted and other issues that they're needed to be changed. The pace of that has to be very careful. And I think at this point, it's taking a good pace going forward. In these findings, we found there is a need for the city government to give more support to its police department, to understand its priorities, to set key performance measures that will help it improve that are measurable, not just for the council, but for community as well, where the community could in fact feel good about what's happening with the police department through the leadership of the council, through the performance of key performance measurements. So I think that'll be key going forward. Additionally, we found the organizational chart to the organization does need to be enhanced. And we're gonna offer you a, a recommended organizational chart, do you think that would work for the organization? As well, we found gaps in training within the organization over the years. And currently, there's definitely a need to have a dedicated, a new position as a training sergeant for the organization, based on the last five, six years, with the state mandates, with the new laws that have come out, the more changes that are coming, as well as the key to a law enforcement's positive performance has much to do with in-service training. The ability for a department to develop their own strategic training plan, and much of that to be done internally. Because we can't always send our officers out to training all over the state. Too expensive, too hard to cover for backfill. So internal training becomes an essence of what you want. It could be done by creating this position. To ensure compliance with regulations and consistency in the training plan, again, we are, we are... again, we are, we are requesting in the report for a new position for a training sergeant. Next slide, please. It gives us the six areas, the next couple of slides will be six areas of recommendations that we're providing, which really focused on the report. The first is training and development. I just talked a little bit about that. And creating a defined administrative training sergeant. It's really essential the department add another new position to the, to the department just focused on training. This position in the years to come can transition to a professional staff manager, but for now, it needs a sworn training sergeant to ensure that the community engagement, the style of field investigations, and the type of training they need are really managed and implemented by a training sergeant under the vision of a police chief that knows which way to take the department. Also, you need to have an established training plan for the year. It should be something that the council is aware of, that you know where the department is training its personnel. It shouldn't be news to you that training might focus too much on tactical, you know, training as opposed to community engagement. It shouldn't be something that you're unaware of. Having a training plan is something we could share with the council, the department can share with the community to show how professional development is an essential plan for our young people in the police department and the type of personnel we want into the future. Retention is a big part of that, making sure people stay here proud of their department. Also, publish a bi-monthly training calendar and ensure the field training officers complete post updates and have resiliency modulars built into the department. We are really looking for systems on recommendations that would provide the ability for the department to ensure its field training officers represent the values of the community in the way they train, the way they recruit. It becomes very important that it ties into the training plan for development. Community trust and transparency is another area that we focused on. A commitment to bilingual public updates and clear summaries of department progress in community-friendly language. It's very important that the police department share its yearly activity and performance and challenges, not just with the council, but with community members where they can understand their department, ask questions directly of them, and know that they're trying to get better every day, every month, every year. That's continual improvement as we move forward. We're also looking, we're recommending, continue to expand social media and community engagement efforts and promote procedural justice and visibility of reform progress. Those two areas are very important for all eighteen thousand police departments across the United States. Very few have the confidence to pursue that. This report ensures that procedural justice, that people could ensure a system of trust and accountability is being built in the police department because you would promote it in your training plan. Additionally, reform progress is important. There are new areas constantly in policing to show that progress in reform is being made. The new ideas are coming forward, that the police chief and his command staff are both innovative and creative in the work they're doing every year, and that makes a big difference for the future. Next slide, please. Accountability internal review. This is a very difficult area for police departments and where it usually fails over the years. I'd like where the police department is at today. They have systems in place, but not without challenges. Those implementations in the last two, three years of accountability systems has caused some friction and some trust issues within the department only because these are new systems. It holds people accountable. It does provide a way to ensure that, that the department is working in the way the council would want them to. However, what we're recommending is an early warning system works well across the United States that helps the current systems that have been put in place that are in fact best practices. There are already good methods in place. They just have to be balanced with an early warning system to give us early indications of employees having performance, behavior, or attitude problems early in which the department can connect it to its training plan, to the new position, and get the people that need training to make them better at what they do. The community expects that. Require, one of the other areas is requiring a quarterly internal review board of personnel investigations, a review of things like vehicle pursuits, use of force, God forbid, but any officer-involved shootings that occur, that the department is in fact reviewing those with a board to ensure that things are done properly by policy, by law, and by community expectations as well. Those sometimes are conflicting issues, but having an internal board of personnel that can review these events really provides confidence for the police department and the department's better, in a better position to answer questions from the council on very difficult situations after use of force and shootings that everybody could feel comfortable with the direction it's going. And also introduce decision and deadline memos. In short, conclusions to personnel investigations that are not surprise to employees. A yearly report for the council to know what discipline looks like for the department without mentioning names specifically, but you have a feeling for the type of style of performance against behaviors and attitudes to give your suggestions to the city manager on what you might want to see from the police department. These are very difficult places for police chiefs and their command staffs to want to be, but it was what's going to change policing across the United States. Another area is technology and data integration. There is some, some investment in police departments. Somebody mentioned fifty percent of the budget goes to the police department. Quite understand that. It is a public safety investment, and it's one that's not going to go away anytime soon. The community, there must be ways for the police department to find support from its community and help educate them to why these things are needed. For, for San Fernando Police Department, upgrading the body worn camera system is important, the new systems that are out there. It's higher levels of accountability. It really provides outcomes that are more positive for the community. You need case management systems for detectives and other areas of departments such as personnel investigations to understand the metrics, how many vehicle pursuits you have, how many personnel investigations of type of reports that you might need. And also personnel investigation tracking systems to understand what type of events are happening and what trends are occurring. You could again, provide training on these trends to help reduce liability. It works very, very well. There'd have to be some investment in professional software tools and running field training programs, internal data. San Fernando Police Department is in need of some of these software programs. They can get expensive, but they're affordable, and it's something to help reduce risk and litigation for a city. So I think it's something you have to invest on the long term. You'll see the investment in there. It really does help. And also, excuse me, launch an internal dashboard for display for training completions for the department to know who's behind on training, who hasn't gone to training, what type of training is needed. It really gives a police chief a good look at what needs to be done and how it should be done as well. And here we have leadership and culture in the next set of recommendations. We would like to recommend to the police department to conduct leadership development workshops. We've seen one. The second one is scheduled for December. That helps to create the culture I believe the council, the city manager, and the community of San Fernando would like to see from their police department by having these type of workshops, by having retreats for the command staff to understand what the challenges are and put things in play to have strategies to reduce, again, the risk and liability of these. It's also important that we have organizational values reinforced. The training helps us understand when you provide this training to the rank-and-file of a police department, they better understand the vision, the values, the goals of the city. I'm oftentimes surprised as how many places across the country that the rank-and-file police don't know the goals of the council, of the park safety, of, you know, business safety, of all these things to make sure that the policing strategy and listening to the chief, he does do that internally. He has with fairly, probably about two, three months. He has a weekly report that goes out to his personnel on these type of things that ties the policing goals with the city goals, which I think is positive. And the last place here is organizational practices. We are recommending, recommending some management practices. One, to really look at overtime and have some controls on overtime to understand the wellness portion of law enforcement careers. We're ordering overtime or constant overtime can burn officers out. Why that impacts our community, somebody working so much overtime that's not getting enough sleep. You have an increase of traffic accidents, not treating the community always with respect that can occur in some places. So having some controls on overtime, even though there's a need for it, it'll always be there. This provides some kind of controls for the department to really look at its overtime by having dashboards and other reports that you could look at. And also increase executive level review of complaints and incidents to prevent silo decision-making. It is important, the organization, and some of this has been occurring already, where the executive staff comes together and discusses community complaints and other challenges in the community. So there's a discussion, whatever recommendations may happen. I'm moving around too much. I need a mobile mic. Sorry about that. And so these are the organizational practices that do matter when we're doing this type of work. Recommendations on this, this one here is the last one. This is the recommended structure for the department. This is the one where in fact, what you had before was the detective section in line with patrol operations in one division and administrative on the second division itself. What we're recommending here in yellow is a new position on the right, which would be the new proposed training sergeant. The areas in green is what we moved from the patrol section over into the administration. And what that means, when you look at a better structured patrol operations, everything field-oriented, community-oriented, the commander and everybody in line, you have a better set of decision-making, better set of visions, goals, and objectives that line up collectively together into one division for the community. That's a better fit from park safety to community service officers, to patrol officers, to reserves are all uniformed in one place and ensuring that the direction travels in, in, in one place where you would want it to do. The second division is about administration. Again, there we have detectives being moved to investigations. We have personnel investigations and other aspects of the business models of a police department that are structured in that area. And again, the most important part is proposing the administrative sergeant for training, which we believe is essential in this review that they have one. But it's, it's a larger discussion to have beyond this, this presentation to budget and monies available for this. And with that, I could answer any questions that the staff may have on this, and I'm available here to do that.
Madam Mayor, before you ask a question, I want to let you know that, let the council know that next step is in January. We'll come back with action plan for the police department. Based on all the recommendation that Chief Perez have given to us, we need to digest it and come up with an action plan that the police department can implement for the next two to three years. So in case you have a question on that, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to, anyone have any questions or comments at this time?
I'll start. Anytime there's police issues, I tend to have a dialogue that I would like to add.
We'll have three minutes for each council member? Okay.
Okay, I mean, this is an issue related to safety, so I might ask for an extension if I have some more additional questions.
We'll go around, and then we'll go around again.
Okay. First of all, I would like to thank Ms. Kith for bringing this forward. When she had this suggestion, I was pretty surprised. This has been my dream for many years since I've been on the city council. And I did not give her this idea unless she somehow assimilated it through osmosis based off my other, you know, dialogue at past meetings. And the fact that you took this prerogative, it's one of the really, it's one of the things that I like to highlight about the great leadership that you've brought forward. The other person who I would like to thank is the chief because this isn't easy to go through. Anytime you have someone assessing you, potentially criticizing you, it, it, it is a daunting undertaking. But this is at the very least, the second time that he showed a willingness to hear constructive criticisms or hear concerns and look for ways to collaborate and improve upon that. The first time was that January thirtieth meeting. So I'd like to thank you for being true to who you were then and continuing this process. But I think it's also fair, just to set the record straight, is that even though you identified a lot of the problems, another huge point which was never discussed is that prior to this, the city council never really, I think, had the drive to look into these issues. For many years, I was the sole member of the city council who would talk about these issues and very often belittled for it or ignored over it. And I'd like to thank especially council members, all of my colleagues, but especially council members Lopez and Garcia because they've really stepped up to this challenge to try to understand what's happening, not to come to conclusions, but to try to understand for the betterment of the community. And I, I want to repeat something that I've said before, is that I think that the chief came into a very challenging position. I think that when he started this job, a lot was thrown on his plate without direction. And some of the direction that he did receive were from people who had ulterior motives. I don't think that when he signed up for his job, he necessarily anticipated that. I'm not sure that many people could have. But while it's important for us to understand what problems or mistakes were made in the past and how they might improve, and how they might impact the present, we really need to chart a path forward for everyone because our residents deserve a police force that is fully staffed and able to respond to critical issues. And so we all have the opportunity to speak to you, Mr. Perez. I don't know if you ever saw my Jan, our January thirtieth meeting. We spoke for about two or three hours about police issues. But is it fair to say that the police culture has had a history of discipline that has been unevenly applied? And I'm not trying to get into any specific cases, any one person, but that's really been one of the first concerns that I've heard from people in the department is that there hasn't been an even application of the rules.
Yes, sir. The process. That's correct.
Yeah. I have maybe three more minutes when it comes back around, but I do have a few more things to add.
Councilmember Garcia?
I just want to thank everyone for participating in this. I want to thank the city manager for thinking of this. I didn't know something like this existed. I want to thank Mr. Perez for spending a lot of time. He really was coming to San Fernando almost every day to speak to the council, the police, hear from the, I think, you know, everyone in our community. I just don't, I don't have many questions. I'm digesting it as well. But is it fair to say that when you had the findings, the recommendations address all those findings? And to the extent there were findings of needs for improvement, they will all be covered in the recommendations?
Absolutely, one hundred percent. These reports have to be usable. They have to be real. Has a lot to do with the future recruitment and retention for the police department. Police departments, you know, they're led by a police department with the council and the city manager, but the changes come from the people of the community. Hiring from your own community, making changes inside, that's what makes a real police department. So these, these findings and the recommendations absolutely be, have to be spot-on and usable and not be pie in the sky or they're so difficult or too expensive to do.
And then I also want to thank our police chief for embracing this. And he has always talked about wanting the best police force possible. That he cares, I think everybody in the community knows about our community so much and is very deeply involved in community engagement. So I want to, I should have thanked him the first round.
Councilmember, the, the recommendations and the findings in that report are all national best practices from NYPD to LAPD or any great police departments. The fact that they're willing to accept those, you're on your way to being the best because of his willingness to put those into play. Those are not simple.
That's wonderful. Thank you. I had a question about the organization chart, org chart.
Is the last, oh, I got to.
Um, is this the org chart as in police commander operations has all these people under them? Because then I don't understand. I don't, is this a, is that how it goes from top to bottom? Because is the detective sergeant under the proposed admin sergeant, or are they just lateral?
They're just lateral.
Okay.
It's hard to push that out. You imagine the screen how it would look. So they're just, they're just units by assignment. They're just, there's nobody, any rank is the same.
Okay.
Their positions are different.
Okay. I don't think I have any more questions. I'll actually give the rest of my time also to Councilmember Fajardo if he needs more. I know he's had a longer history on the council and experience here. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, first of all, thank you, Mr. Perez, to work for, for our police department. I hear a great things about you and, you know, I'm working with our new elected city manager. You know, this is amazing, and I'm glad a lot of the community members are here present. When you asking what the council doing, we're doing a lot of stuff. Maybe it's not in the public, but we're working slowly, surely, step by step with the police department, with our council to making sure our, our community members are safe. And so we grateful to have this beautiful, strong police department here in the city of San Fernando, which I, we feel really proud because not everywhere we have a department who can be in you, in your house and in any part of the city in less than five minutes. So, you know, kudos to our department. And yes, I'm looking to, I'm so happy to see these plans. And but I will maybe have an ask in this chart that you present. If you maybe can add it, sound like for the mental, mental crisis because I know a lot, we have some cases in our city which sometimes, you know, families call the police. And sometimes the police can confuse or when they have like a mental crisis. I don't know if there will be any area there where we can help. And the other ask is for the immigration. If you, that, our department can collaborate with any other organizations here in a local area that can help and help us to navigate right now in the race.
And on those two points, this is why you have a training sergeant, we hope, and a training platform. Mental health is a constant training feature of a police department, not only for how they gain cooperation with procedural justice, but as well to ensure that you give training. they gain cooperation with procedural justice, but as well to ensure that you give training to the personnel on the inside to know who to call when they need help. So this is why the training plan is so essential. It just can't be certain things about police departments. The training plan for the department has to include, uh, the goals of the city manager, the goals of the council. That's why you have a set training program. With immigration, um, I will tell you right now, this chief is doing it right. I dealt with that for many years in Pasadena. It is not simple. You have a federal law enforcement that works under their guidelines. They don't have to listen to the local police department, but this chief of police has access, uh, to federal people to try to find out information. And we have talked, he has reached out to them, wanting them to contact him when they come into town and to give him information. Well, he can only get what he can from them. They're not going to willingly give this up, but you, this community probably doesn't know it, but they have a chief of police that is making these phone calls, is aggressively trying to find information out, but it's very difficult to get the information you want back. And tell, and I know the chiefs in LA County are working together to figure out what it's going to look like, because every community is different. Some communities aren't dealing with ICE. Other communities, uh, families can't go to sleep at night. So these are challenges and I think this, this recommendations will get at both those issues that you would want.
I just want to be my last comment. Uh, I, we just want to make sure that our, our police department are not collaborating with the ICE. You know, that's what the main of the concern for the residents.
And the challenge there is not to cooperate, but to have communication. That's a, that's a very gray line, because you want to be able to call the chief and say, hey, chief, can you call ICE and find out about this family and this person? And you actually want the chief to get information back to you, right? So this is the difference between cooperating and having communication. And I believe the chief's trying to figure that out. But it's a very gray area that the community should want their chiefs to have communication, just don't cooperate. That's, that's a difficult place.
Madam Mayor? Um, I would like the chief to explain a little bit about the chaplain program. Like Chief Perez has mentioned, the ministry sergeant would be good to provide training throughout our department, but what we have now is a chaplain program onboard that can, that helps us with the mental crisis issue. So if you don't mind, I would like the chief to explain that program a bit.
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, uh, about a year, year and a half ago, we unveiled our, uh, chaplain program. And it's actually been more useful and more successful than I even anticipated in the sense that, um, what prompted, what prompted the chaplain program was, uh, Sa- San Fernando police officers had responded to, uh, a seventeen-year-old who died, uh, in a motorcycle accident on Hubbard. And when we, uh, went to reach out to the family the next day, we realized that, uh, there were four other children in the home who had just lost a brother and a mother and a father who were still in shock. And I realized that each one of these family members was going through their own grieving process. And how can mom and dad grieve or help their children grieve when they themselves are grieving? And so I, at the time, asked, uh, the lieutenant, what mental health resources do we have and, or, or, or support do we have for these, for this family? None. And so right then and there, I thought we, we need to do something. And so we established a chaplain program. Uh, later that year, we had a family who experienced a suicide of a fifteen-year-old child and it was on, uh, I believe the day after Thanksgiving. We called the, uh, chaplain and chaplain right away came and, and from there, it just started gaining traction to the point now where we have the chaplain come in on unexpected deaths to help us notify family members when a, when a family member is deceased, so they're not hearing about it in the newspaper or getting a phone call from the coroner's office. And so this is just one of the programs that we established in part with no money, but also with, uh, a commitment from community members who want to give to their police department and give back to their community. So, um, all of this to say that whether it's the chaplain program or the mental health grant that we had, w- we are always looking for creative ways of supporting our community, especially with mental health, um, crises. So, um, th- that's just one example of what we've done at the police department.
So I can tell you just right off the bat, going across the United States, you have that model already. Maintaining it, training on it and having it there for the community is the hardest part over the years to come.
Okay, we're done here. Vice Mayor Solorio?
Thank you. Um, I just have a few comments. Uh, in terms of our leadership, I, you know, I want to say applaud our leadership. One, uh, our city manager for, um, you know, implementing this and starting this and starting the conversation with all our police officers. I thank you, Kanika, for doing this and, um, thank you to our consultant, uh, John, because you took on this task and you were very efficient and very quick into doing this. And, um, you opened a lot of doors within our department, meaning that people were very much willing to speak with you and share their concerns and say, hey, this is what we believe and think. Um, and so thank you for that. Um, and lastly, uh, thank you to the chief, because I really do believe, chief, that you having the openness and giving up all the information and saying, hey, this is where we are in this department and I am open for feedback. I am open to be corrected if need be. Um, that deserves amendis-, uh, a lot of applause. So thank you for that leadership and continuing to, uh, move San Fernando forward. Um, in terms of the assessment or the four key areas, whether that is, you know, the training, admin practices, technology and equipment and leadership and culture, I definitely do believe that they align with our modern policing as well as our city's mission, uh, in striving to move forward. Um, I do strongly support the recommendation of creating an administrative training sergeant or whatever equivalent that may be, uh, sergeant level role, um, in overseeing, of course, like the training, standardizing the evaluation, compliance and, uh, uh, especially supportive morale, uh, which this department definitely can thrive with. Um, and lastly, um, I do, uh, want to say that I am excited to see the recommendation or staff's recommendation in terms of a three-year plan for this implementation of these strategic, or what I would imagine are goals for our department. Um, so I'm excited for, um, our future measurable milestones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez, for your presentation and, um, also want to thank, uh, Kanika, uh, Ms. Kith and the chief for, um, supporting this endeavor. Um, and I do want to say, uh, to Councilmember Fajardo, the chief did, you know, you said you, you think that he came into a difficult situation. He did come into a difficult situation when he ca- came into the city. Uh, it was quite tough. He had a lot of things coming at him when, when he started. Um, and there, there wa- there is one question I have is, um, and what is, let me see. Will you be working with, uh, uh, Ms., the city manager and the chief on the plan, on the plan once you, this is submitted and we're all done?
I think that's going to be up to the council and the city manager. So my answer to that is I'm always available for you. I love this community, this city. I've invested some good money the last two, three months. I enjoy coming out here, so I hope to be part of this community that way. If there's time to come.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I just wanted to check that and, you know, I think, but, uh, the work that you did was very intense and you were with us for quite some time. And just, uh, just going back, how is it that you made the selection of having Mr. Perez come in to San Fernando and to our police department, Ms. Kith?
So, um, as the vice mayor mentioned, I conducted a listening session with the police department, actually with the entire city staff. I did a listening session with the police department and met with some, um, officer and one of our officer recommended Chief Perez as one of the highly respected police chief that could come in and do an assessment of our police department. I know, um, prior to that, we have met with other police chief. Um, I think, what is the name of the organization, leadership? The other one that we typically use for our police development force is another police organization that have retired police chief. Uh, we did interview a couple, I think, when we were looking into doing a, I forget which one it was, but they submit proposal, we interviewed some retired police chief. So we met with two police chief there and then after I met with John Perez, I figured like he was the one that could understand our department because of his experience in Pasadena and actually his experience working with the DA. So that's why I selected him other than, rather than the other, um, retired police chief that we spoke with.
Okay, thank you. And as council members, we all had an opportunity to, to meet with him and give him our input as well. Uh, so, and then, you know, in reading the, the report here, the, uh, what we were provided with, one of the things in the overall department overview, uh, that it says that kind of caught my attention was that sustained improvement requires fair promotions, consistent leadership and strong communication. You know, and that's, you know, uh, you know, so true, you know, it's really important to, particularly the communication, that, you know, you can't really move forward without communicating, because everything stops or everybody gets all confused after that. So, uh, we'll, um, we'll just do the final round if anyone has any additional comments.
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo, you have two minutes.
One thing that I noticed on your chart that I've never really heard discussed is that it said one commander. We had a opening for two commanders. Does that mean that you're only saying that we should have one?
No, no, I believe you have a, uh, one pending on a promotion.
Oh, is, so it was about that one pending one, right?
There, there you have one permanent.
Cause you had the one, you had the number one next to commander, so I wasn't sure what that meant.
One is just, yeah.
That's just mean one more pending, okay, got it.
You have your two that you have, but you're functioning with one right now.
Got it. So I'll have, uh, my closing remarks and if I have time for another question, I'll sneak it in. So this is what I've been trying to say for many years. And in the interim, when we waited, delayed, we've lost a lot of good people. I hope that we can implement this sooner than later so that we can retain people because it's imperative for the organization and of course even recruit more people. By not, by having avoided this question for so long, it does put the community in danger and it burns out our staff. And so I'm really thankful for everyone who has helped move this along. I also want the public to know that this is very challenging to do because anytime we have tried to make reforms of the police department, there's a massive misinformation campaign that starts behind the scenes to intimidate councils, council members from not bringing up issues, to intimidate peo- members of the public for not being critical. And the only voices you hear from the public, surprisingly in San Fernando, are people saying not to make any changes for city council, not to get involved. The fact that we did have a city council who prioritized this has led to a city manager who I believe embraces this and now we're moving into the right policy on this issue.
On that point?
Yeah.
Councilmember, um, I spoke to more than half of the personnel in the department, approximately 75%.
Yeah.
I spoke to one young man who recently left and what would get him to stay. Many of these things in the reports, I would have helped that young officer to stay.
This is what I was trying to say.
You have a lot of people looking for change, a lot of young people wanting to see what's happening. Um, on the other part of it, about the rumors and the information flow, when you have the, the, the internal reports, the community communication and the constant updates for council, you would start to educate and provide actual information for everybody so this, so it gets done. This is why part of the recommendations to ensure dashboards, reports, public information, and the chief has already started to do some of this to his credit. You keep doing that in a leadership tempo to the organization and the community, I think you'll see a lot of rumors and issues like that begin to die off.
Thanks. And if anyone wants to give me an extra minute or two of their time, I have my last two questions for him.
I'll give you mine.
Yeah, thank you. May I finish some? So one of the things that I think is really important is there has to be a bridge, a way for the POA to be able to work with the chief. And I feel that there's a really strong disconnect right now. And I hate to describe it this way, but one of the ways that I've described it to people is that sometimes in marriages, you do have two people who are at odds with one another, but there are ways to mend that or with any relationship. You have a falling out with a friend, there are ways to mend that. How do we start that process of mending things? Because some people don't like when I say this, but I believe that this relationship can be mended and it's not what some people want to hear. Some people want me to say something else, but do you believe it can be mended and if so, how do we start that?
It's already started.
Okay.
It will take some time to get where you want to be, but right now with the chief, I already see the, the labor association engagements, the weekly report he's putting out for the personnel, those are talking points. Those are areas in which the associations can start their conversations with the chief. That the factors, a weekly communication message on what's going on in the police department, provide the labor associations to share that with their rank and file to prioritize the issues. And now they are, um, set engagement points for the labor associations and the chief's command. Everything that's being planned is, uh, engagement with the chief and the, and the labor associations, the command staff and the labor associations. It's not just the chief. The executive staff is important, they engage labor as well. It will take a little bit of time, but the communication channels have opened. They're there, it's in existence. So now it'll just take some time for it to gain some momentum and to stick to the plan to make sure six months from now, you could see the difference.
And then the last question before that beep goes off is, one of the things that's bothered me when we had like that January 30th meeting is that some of the people who are saying not to make any changes are implying that the POA has no idea what they're talking about, they only want lenient rules so they can get away with stuff. I've seen them as credible, good people who have genuine concerns. Obviously, there are some people who do have situations where reprimanding are more as needed, but do you, what do you say that by and large, their concerns were well-intentioned and credible?
Yes, to a certain degree. Now, this is important. The issue of change is people, they push back on change, especially in law enforcement across the United States. The reason is the process of change. Everybody wants to go to sleep at night and wake up and change happened, right? Nobody wants to go to the process. So usually labor associations, frontline personnel, everybody's concerned of the process of change. They know where they could be that's better, but the process of it's very frustrating. And that's where the educational part comes in for the engagements to adjust that as time goes forward.
Thank you.
You'll see that happening.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I have.
Councilmember Garcia?
Ms. Lo, Councilmember Lo.
Didn't you give your mo- time?
I gave my first round time to him.
Just kidding.
Um, for my second.
You so much.
Second round. I had two questions and just when I was hearing about the chaplain, it sounds like he's going out, um, to the most kind of horrific experiences of people's lives. So if you're dealing with suicide and deaths, are we, how are we helping him? Because he's a volunteer, I don't think we pay him. And I'm just wondering how we support him and help him, uh, maintain?
The chief can talk more about that, but there's national training conferences now for chaplains. There's ways to make sure you get reimbursed for some of the services that they have, uh, but there are processes for them to have their own peer support, because they need it. The officers see trauma every single day, they're like small rocks being put on the shoulders until you don't know how you're going to react to it one day and just fall over for whatever reasons. Uh, chaplains are the same way, they're human beings. They see a lot of, uh, of tragedy and a lot of issues people are dealing with. They offer national training courses for them through the police department. And having support from rank and file personnel and the chief of police is really what the chaplains want to do. They really are committed to this and there's special people that do this work and giving them the credit they deserve, acknowledging them in public, um, is important for the council and everybody else to make sure that your chaplaincy program can grow. I came from a place where we grew ours to over twenty and they had their own meetings and their own groups and things like that. So I would, I would sense yours should grow very easily with one of them being the poster child for positive chaplaincy programming. If there was anything else.
Chief, wow. Um, precisely what you said, uh, my goal is to grow our, our chaplain program, um, to include multi, uh, denominations, but we talk about training and support for the chaplain. It's not uncommon for me to call the chaplain and ask him if he's okay and what's his support system. And he actually shared with me that he has a support system at his, um, at, at his church, but we've also sent him to training as well. And the one thing I failed to, to also mention is that our chaplain also, um, provides support to our police officers. And I'm glad to say that not only does our chaplain do this, but we have a peer support program at our police department. And I'm surprised at how much it is being used. And it just goes to show that there's an openness now even within the police department to seek help, because I, I look at the calls for service and I do care about our community and I do care about our police officers and our professional staff. And when I hear about whether it's people being shot, people being stabbed, domestic violence, these officers are seeing it every day. And I'm asking myself, how are they coping and, and how are they getting through their own personal problems as they're trying to protect our community? So yes, we have established a system and, and again, I'm looking forward to implementing these recommendations, but also learning from you, what else could we be doing? How else can we enhance this?
You might be surprised how many rank and file personnel reach out to the chaplain. If those are private moments, um, and from experiences, it happens more than, than you can imagine to help put the officers back on the right track. So it's occurring, it's out there. Great question.
Um, my second question is for the training sergeant, I voted against that. My second question is for the training sergeant. I voted against that in the budget. And it was because I felt like we were really low on officers. So I know that we need one. I'm not saying we don't. But isn't there a line where we're not going to have enough cars filled? And then we have admin sergeants? Or, I don't know, maybe I can talk with you about that later.
It's a force multiplier. It is a challenge to keep your eye on. But if you have a good training sergeant and a training platform, your officers are actually better trained to handle things differently and more effectively. And so from a time management standpoint, hopefully that helps out with the type of resources that you have in the organization. It's not to replace an officer, but at the same time, it could help reduce the workload for the officers by having a very good training plan. It makes the organization more effective. And really, over the lifetime, you will see a reduction in lawsuits, complaints, litigation, and things you pay money out towards. And for police departments, they never get the money back for the money they save, right? It's just the way it works. So in the long run, you might find having that position, there's a big return on its investment and something to look at, something to make sure that it gets where you want it to be.
Councilmember Lopez, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you again, Mr. Perez and our chief, Valdez. You've been amazing. You've been in the community. And, you know, sometimes it's hard. You know, the community is hard for understanding how hard our department worked. And, you know, see our officers here in routine and open to, you know, be transparency to the community. It does mean a lot for my family, for our residents and our constituents to work really close hand in hands to making sure everybody's safe here in the cities of Fernando.
Vice Mayor, Solario.
No additional comments. Thank you.
And I don't have any additional comments. Just thank you for all the work that was done.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I want to say thank you to Chief Perez. But I also want to acknowledge a retired police chief in our audience right now, Chief Joe Ortiz. He's the former police chief from the city of South Pasadena. And he's actually sitting in the audience watching this organizational assessment. Thank you.
Thank you.
You would be surprised how many retired police chiefs and people want to see police departments get better and we're involved constantly in these communities, our hometowns, to make sure we get better. So it's a community effort. We're here for you. I'll be here for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion...
Yes.
Oh, no, sorry. We're going to take a break. 10 minutes. 10 minutes, and that means... 8:06. Okay, we are now returning from recess, short recess. And the next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration to co-sponsor a San Fernando Christmas parade. This was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Lopez. Please provide your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. And the reason that I bring this to your attention is because since I live in the cities of Fernando close to 40 years, we never, I never see any Christmas parade. of San Fernando close to 40 years, we never, I never see any Christmas parade, any parade at all. And I feel like this is the time and place to have this type of events, family events, will be benefit the business and, and the community in whole. You know, we always been in buy for different parades for Pacoima. Pacoima is going to celebrate the 58th parade in, in Pacoima. And, you know, San Fernando, you know, it never, never had this opportunity to share this love and Christmas for our, our neighbors. And I know sometimes we be a little political because some people don't want to call Christmas. They want to call holiday parade, festival parade. But, you know, like in our communities, a lot of families who not going to have any good moments and maybe they don't going to have a gift for the kids. And that's what I'm looking forward. I have, so far, I have five organizations who's willing to support the parade. I'm, for the last past three weeks, I mean, visit some of the business in the area and they're willing to support that parade. And I just asking you, you know, to show the leadership here in the city of San Fernando and do something that will impact and create a legacy for our, our city. It's not easy, but it's not impossible. And, you know, I believe I, it wasn't my wish list at beginning of the year I presented and I totally understand right now that, you know, some families have the concern for the race, but we have different event, we have the outdoor market, we have the grito and that ice never show up in our city. The only place they focus right now is in the Home Depot or places where the people being asked for work. So, you know, I, I hopefully you can co-sponsor this event and send this strong message to our families that we care for them. You know, I don't know, and I'm not going to complain about the past administration. I'm not going to complain about our past council members or mayor, but, you know, I'm here to work and show the support for the community and everything is possible if we want to do it. And that's going to be all my presentation.
Okay.
And I'm open to any question that you might have.
Pardon me?
I'm open to any question.
Okay, okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and start this one here. Well, first of all, here, I just want to make it really clear that I do support a parade and, and we have had them in the past, actually, when I, it's, I'm not sure how old I was and I think that I did live on Brand. It would pass right through Brand Boulevard, but I'm not sure when the last one was. It's been quite a while, but it was on Brand Boulevard and it was our local community, our high school, San Fernando High, and our drill teams and football players, the Bears and the various local organizations that would be a part of it. And so, you know, it was something that was really enjoyed by the entire community. And I, I'm not sure if it was actually during the holidays or sometime during the summer or what time, at what time of the year, but it was, you know, very popular and it would end up over at Recreation Park. So it is something that's, that it's really close in my memory and that everyone enjoyed. So, but given that, it was something that it, we did discuss the parade during the budget period and it was staff presented that it would cost us $100,000. And in reviewing our budget, it wasn't one of the item that was supported by council. And so, that's, that's one of the things. And also, this request is coming one month prior to, to this, when you want this event. You want it on the 13th, which is also on the same date as they're having it in Pacoima, you know, which is very close. But to be honest, I really don't think that it's fair to staff to having to put on an event within a month. And I'm not sure, what, what is it that you have already in place? What, what do you have in place already for this? Do you have everything or?
I, I have, I have so far the nonprofit who's going to do the work and another five other organization who's well, not in the community, like the Fisal. The Fisal is one of the oldest organization here in Los Angeles. They have 25 years doing parades. And I just wanted, you know, I've been, the other one is Ecuadorian Parade in Los Angeles and the code they provide with me is totally different for what the, our staff provide at the time when we was discussing the budget. At the time, they say a hundred and I asked the Ecuadorians would take, they parade in the broader street and use the Placita Olvera and, and they told me it was less than $1,600. So, you know, and the parade that we planning to do is from A, on MacLeys Street, from, start from A Street, ending on Third Street. So, yes, the Pacoima Parade is going to be there, but we're not talking about Pacoima. We're not talking about Granada Hills. We're talking about our city. Let's be, have pride for our city and do something for our city.
Do you have, do you have a traffic plan? Do you have an emergency plan already in place?
I had application, I didn't, I didn't submit that because I just want to have that approval for the council because if I do all that and at the end of the day, you're not, you're not going to support that event.
Okay.
But the staff will be the half of the weight, the power of the parade. It's not going to be that whole administrative work in this parade.
Because right now, I know that we're currently working as Councilmember Farado, one of the things that, one of the priorities we have is working on our water system. And I don't know if this is something that would take away from that and we're not really, that's one of our major projects that needs to be completed. And whether it takes staff away from that, I'm not sure, but that definitely has to be done. But I, you know, to, in reality, I don't think that it's something that's fair to staff to have to put on something like this and it's not an item that's been funded and it's quite costly. It does mean making arrangements with our police department, our public works and everyone else to develop a plan, logistics. There's a lot involved and everyone have to stop what they're doing to develop a plan in one month, which is logistics and everything else.
With all my respect.
And so I, I do also want to make some other comments. This is what my, you know, my part is in that if, if the vote is to not have a parade, I do want to make others recommendations that if we don't have a parade, that there might be other things that we can do in place of that. Maybe something in a smaller scale or like, you know, maybe possibly plan a, a contest with the businesses where they can decorate their, their shops and we can give a prize to the, the businesses and we can use our community investment funds to provide the shops with a prize. You know, the first place could be $500 and $300 for second place and $100 for the third place. And then maybe a little fashion show for the children, you know, and if we want, we could also provide a prize for that. And, or, you know, one year we had a bicycle, a decorated bicycle ride that the, the kids were able to come in with their bicycles one year in the mall and they were just going up and down riding their bikes in the middle of the mall. That was something that was done. But just anything, you know, is possible, but it, just something in a small, smaller scale that doesn't require a lot of staff time. So those are just, you know, I'm just throwing out ideas. It doesn't mean that it's something that needs to be done, but that's where I stand at this time. So, Councilmember Farado?
Certainly. So I'm certainly open to this, but are you open to the idea, Councilmember Lopez, of us giving direction to have a Christmas parade, but have it next year? I just feel that that might be a little bit easier logistic wise. And I also think that if there is a way that we can combine it on the same day as the tree lighting ceremony, maybe we just, we reimagine the tree lighting ceremony altogether. I tend to agree with you. I think that all of these different names are kind of weird. I've said for many years, just call it Christmas. Even people who are not religious or who don't believe in the Christian faith, many of them love celebrating Christmas as a time for being with family, giving gifts and whatnot. So are you open to having this next year if we say, hey, this is something that we want to move forward with, we just don't want to rush it this year?
Honestly, you know, I feel like, you know, for, in the past, nobody bring it to the table. It is a beautiful ideas that everybody want to do something different, but that's what I bring it. And, and I, I'm totally understand that might be political at this point.
No, it's not political.
Not just because I, I bring it, excuse me, I have the floor. I didn't interact with, and with all the respect. Every time that I, I bring idea to the council, just because it's me, it's not going to approve it and have so many excuses. And how do you spend the money when you're not asking the, the business? Not, 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 not even go there because in, in our wish list, the lighting, it wasn't there and was approved, right? That any community member, any business that you ask, maybe just, just a few people. So if you, every time that I propose something, you're just going to make excuse? Be clear and say, no, I not will, I not will support because it's you. I have, like I say, I have five organization willing to step and do it. I asking you for permission to do this and co-sponsor? I will find my ways to do it, whether it's going to be with the support for the council or with the community. But the community always going to remember who is with them or who is just play this political, who has the power. You know, that happened with the Mexican council, not with the parade. It's going to be next year. Really? Next year? Are you going to put money in the parade?
Yes, that's the whole point. Yeah, let's put money into it, but let's at least have time to plan. But, you know, I, I don't want you to feel as though when you bring an item, it's not going to be accepted. I mean, for example, for the Mexican consulate, which was exclusively your idea, you know, phenomenal idea. I wish I had thought about it, but you were, you were amazing. You brought this forward, you really pushed for it. You did get support amongst the council and like I've been on the council, I know that it's, it is a bad feeling when we have these great ideas and when we don't have, you know, an immediate response. Trust me, as I was talking about my exasperation with the police issues, it's been like 10 years. But the only, I guess the concerns that I have are that this is something that I feel takes a lot of planning involved. I know that you're saying that you're willing to do a lot of the planning, if not all of it, but we don't even necessarily know the cost. I tend to agree with you that the estimate that we were given of $100,000 seems, you know, really high, but I don't have anything to compare it to. And so, I'm, if the city council wants to have it this year, I'm open to doing that. But I think just to give staff, staff time to prepare, that I would like for us to have the ability to, to have a little bit more time so we do it next year and maybe we assimilate it into the tree lighting ceremony. So it's just called the San Fernando Christmas Celebration, which is what I've always think it should be called. So those are just kind of my general thoughts, but I do like the idea. I think it'll attract a lot of people to the city. And if there's some way to use some of those funds for lights where, you know, we only do it for six months instead of 12 months and we have an extra, I don't know, $50,000 for the parade next year, you know, that's even better. So I believe that the money is there. I just don't know if the staff time to do it and what day or the 10th, you know, in 30 days is feasible, but I'd love to hear more from my other colleagues and from staff as well.
Councilmember Garcia?
Okay, so just to preface this, I'm going to say things that you probably like and probably that you don't like, but I have no political agenda. I wanted to start by complimenting you and saying that your tenacity and your ability to push for things and make them happen is so admirable. I was actually going to mention the consulate. I was going to mention how you brought up the idea of bringing the Mexican consulate here and they told us they were booked till next year and I believe them. I believe they were booked till next year, but you didn't give up. You said, we'll keep asking, we'll keep asking and we kept asking and we kept asking and they had a cancellation and we got to slip through that little cancellation crack in October. But I don't think anyone was lying, my opinion, I don't think anyone was lying to us. I think it was your tenacity that got us to be ready when the availability happened. And so I wanted to compliment you on that. And I think the same thing the Christmas parade. I put that on my list for the budget too. And I was told, like all of us, that it was $100,000 and didn't understand, but I guess we didn't push back enough at that time. I also think though, that what I kind of see, like I said no to almost every wish list item from my colleagues and I actually liked almost every single item. I liked all of the items that you guys brought and I wanted them and I said no on the record to all of them because I, I was working within my budget. And so, one thing I noticed and I do the same thing is that sometimes we have a budget and we say we have to fit this budget and then we go later in the year and we bring an agenda item and then we approve it or not. And I, I think that now, I mentioned this earlier, that when we have that agenda item from the council and it says, is this a budgeted item? And we were all like, we don't need that. Now I see the purpose of it, to say, is this covered or is this coming from our reserves? So I think we should just be clear when we're voting, is this money part of our operating budget or is it coming out of our reserves? So we have just a clear idea of what we're voting on. And I believe this would be coming from our reserves. And I'm sure if anyone could plan a Christmas parade in one, in 30 days, you could. But I do know it requires a plan, it requires closing streets, it requires overtime. So we did not budget for that. Now what I love that you said was that you want to make this, and I want to do it and I, I will prioritize that if we have our mid-year review budget or next budget, I will prioritize that on my budget wish list. Now, you wanted to do a lot of family friendly events, those are so, I agree with you, so important and that's your specialty and that's also what I prioritize. So, are we able to do those events without having a quote unquote parade this year? Are we able to still somehow do that? And I'm, I'm wondering if we could work to see if that can happen so that, because we are doing a really big tree lighting this year. Like it's going to be bigger than ever before, it's going to be more beautiful, more decorated. Maybe we can expand on that and add the family friendly events there as a preview. That's our big event, our big holiday event this year and then next year's big holiday event is the actual parade. Because I do want to be able to invite everyone to participate. I want to invite the dance teams, the drill teams, the sports teams, the folklorical groups. And I think a lot of them are going to be at Pacoima Parade and I think a lot of them are going to be booked. I know a lot of them plan out, they have to reserve and they oftentimes pay in advance or get their costumes and I want them to be able to participate in ours. And I don't want to stress out their families or their organizations either because you can manage a lot, but a lot of people I've learned, as we learned in our assessments, the personalities can't. This stresses people out to have, you know, last minute and, and they cannot function as well as you can. And so how can we make it a bigger tent, a bigger invitation to everyone where they know well in advance, we're blocking off this date, this is going to be the San Fernando Christmas parade date? So that's why I'm leaning not towards the parade where it would be the extra expenses and planning, the traffic control plan, the overtime, but how can we do still the heart of what you want, which is the family friendly event, so the really special spectacular event this year and then prioritize it in our budget for next year?
Well, I just wanna, um, clarify that I was scheduled the parade from two to four, not in the morning. Because I know the parade from Pacoima will be from, um, maybe nine to 12. And in, in fact, I know the people that were already gonna be in the parade, they, they willing to support and come to our parade. So because they already had the card, they already has that a family, uh, uh, spirit for the Christmas, they're willing to, you know, spend a little time. At that time, it will be an event here in the city hall, outside the city hall. So, you know, it's, it's only gonna be, it's not gonna be the whole day, it's gonna be just like two hours. And so far, what I've been talking with the neighbors, they are happy because they never see that. Yeah, the parade, maybe the last parade was over 45 years. But I say, you know, when, when we're talking about leaders, leaders in our community, that's how you show leadership. You know, what is, what is our priority? A priority is what? Serve to our community, listen to them, what is the need for them? And bring that resource to them. And I would like to hear from.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Thank you. Um, I just have some questions, so let's see. Um, so in terms of like funding this event, I, I do see that you, Councilmember Lopez, you put up all the organizations on there, but I'm wondering, is it a co-sponsorship where the city would come up with some of the funds? Or has that been a conversation yet? And if so, do we know what that cost will be?
That is something had to do with our city manager. She had to bring with the real numbers, real numbers. And maybe the other part will be from the nonprofit and the business willing to support.
Okay, and so, uh, Ms. Kit, can you let us know in terms of if these organizations take over the parade? Um, and maybe the city would just have to, what I imagine is close the street? Um, because I did see on here that they are planning to do like the cleanup, uh, the advertising. Um, there was a bunch of things on there that I don't have up on my screen right now. But I did see that, um, these organizations were willing to put in the work and time and effort, um, and basically taking on the event and not necessarily having our Public Works and our, uh, rec team to do the typical things that we would do to close down for an event. So I'm wondering, for budget, are we seeing it just being a budget cost of closing down the street?
Um, that's a question that we'll have for the council. If the council decide to move forward with the parade, what scope of, what level of support do you, are you looking for from the city? So we could present a budget, because what is being proposed here is similar to the first mile run. The same route, right? But however, it's a bigger impact than the first mile run because we have to figure out where the float will be staged at. Where, where the float gonna be stored before we get it on the street? We also have to, for the first mile run, actually, we work with a consultant to do the traffic control plan. And then our staff, Public Works team and police are just supplement. We don't have enough personnel to actually do the traffic control. So if we move forward with the parade, that's something we definitely need to know. Which company is doing the traffic control plan? Um, and how does that plan look like? We need a site plan of the route, the street that needs to be closed. We also need approval from fire department, so who's gonna be working with the fire department to get that approval? Um, and I don't know what's a typical timeframe that fire department would need. Um, and also that we need to figure out our personnel staffing would just be supplement. Because my understanding is that this organization would put everything together. And we would just help with promoting the flyers and shutting down the street and keeping the area safe. My other concern is safety, because I guess, um, the same day, we also have the Foodzilla event. And, um, during the holiday season, I guess, when I was talking to our Public Works and our police personnel is, it is during the holiday season, so people have requested vacation. So we just want to make sure we have enough personnel to do the street closure and keep the community safe during the event. But that's why the traffic control plan would be the key, because first of all, we need to know what does that look like? And what is needed from our team to do the work?
Okay.
I wanted to ask Councilmember Lopez if she had a traffic control plan or any approvals from the fire department?
I'm willing to maybe get back to the next meeting and bring it to a board. And if we have everything in plan for that day, and I can present to the council, maybe.
But you don't have anything right now to present to council?
Of course not, of course not, because how I gonna do it if you, I, I not sure what is this, that is, um, the support for the council and the mayor, you know? If the mayor are not willing to support and you put everything in work and that they didn't get approval. But right now, it's like 80%. We just need the traffic and the fire department.
This is not 80%, I'm sorry, but it's not, it's like not, not.
Madam Mayor, um, in speaking with the chief here, what we also need to, and maybe I'll have Maribel elaborate on this, and she's the one that sends the rec departments, the one who organized the first mile run. What we also need to is fire department approval, a paramedic station, bathroom facility. So we need to know if all that will be in place. And we'll have to review it internally through our staff, through the various department. When we get a special application comes in, we route to police, community development, public works, um, to take a look at everything. So the traffic control plan will need to be reviewed by community development, public works and police before we could present it to council. Uh, Maribel, can you speak a little bit about what it takes to plan the first mile run or to do a parade like this? Thank you.
So in regards to the traffic control plan that everyone's speaking about and is alluding to, the city will contract JCL, we use JCL this year to basically plan out the route for us with all the closures. And typically, when we think of the closures, we think of just the closures down McClay. But Rodrigo can even explain that these closures go beyond McClay, right? You have to have, um, you go a block or two outside of the main street that's gonna be closed to make sure that cars aren't gonna come down to where the actual street closure is on the main route. Um, so there's a lot that goes into planning the actual traffic control, um, map. And it has to be a certified map by an engineer. So the company that we use, they charged us this past year, it was to the tune of 22,150. And that's just the traffic control plan. Um, you know, on top of that, then you have the permit you have to, you know, apply for with the fire department. I don't have the cost of that, but I can come back to the council with that information. Um, you have all the staffing costs, if there's gonna be, um, need for staffing to supplement the traffic control company. Because that's what, that's where Public Works helps us when we do the San Fernando Valley Mile. Because we don't have the manpower to ensure all those closures. So it's not just streets, right? It's streets, it's driveways, it's notifying all the businesses, all the residents on the main route and outside of the route. Right? Because you're gonna be affecting all these folks. You also have to contact Metro to reroute the bus, the buses that go through McClay, making sure that they have the appropriate route so that it doesn't disrupt their, their path of travel. So there is a lot that goes into it. Um, and those are just some of the, the basic things, right? That do need to be secured prior to, um, doing the fun stuff like, uh, como se dice? Looking out or calling out for floats, for participants, for the groups, for the bands, for the dancers. That's all, you know, that's the stuff that really makes the parade happen. But before you do all that, you really need to have a traffic control map. Because the city's priority is gonna be safety.
Of course.
You know, um, and we've had those open street events, we've had, um, two of them now, right? The first one, the big lesson we learned is that no barricade should be unmanned. Because people will just come up to the barricade and move it. And then you have a vehicle in an area where we shouldn't have vehicles, right? And that happened during our first open streets event and I don't want to give out a year, but the first one we did, I can't remember, 2016, 17?
I forgot something around there.
Yeah, yeah, so we, you know, there was lessons learned from that event. And I fully support what everyone, all the council members are saying here. And I think, you know, I speak for myself that, yes, we would like to see a Christmas parade come back. The last one was either 2007 or 2011, just based on some of the records I was able to go back through. Um, the city in the past has hired a pageantry company, which they then come in and they coordinate all the floats. Right? Because that also takes a lot of time. And I mean, if I try to remember what it took back then, I was a rec leader when we had the last holiday parade. And I just remember bringing out the seniors to participate. But I do remember seeing a lot of other things happening in regards to maintaining the safety of that route to ensure it was safe for not only the community, but for the people participating in the, in the event. But again, my specialty is not the closures, I just know that's how much we paid this year. Rodrigo can explain some more on what the, um, the scope of the closures looks like, right? And how much that entails, so.
So on the closure, like Maribel stated, it's not just the route itself. Um, also McClay is a very, uh, um, complicated street. Um, other streets might be a little easier, but the starting where you stage them at the beginning, the floats and where you end them, that's also gonna require a large footprint. Um, and like, uh, Maribel stated, it's not just the route, it's surrounding neighborhoods that where we have to place advanced warning so we can let individuals know that they can't go into that area. Um, also on Eighth Street, after Eighth Street is the City of Los Angeles, so we can't close their area. We can just do advanced warnings. And so what we did in the past for this route is we routed them to the right on Eighth Street and sent them around, uh, Harding. So this is a very complicated, um, um, closure. It requires flaggers, it required a soft, uh, opening where the policeman Glenn Oaks to let traffic through. Um, so it's a very complicated, very lengthy process to throw this event. Um, for instance, there's over 100 driveways and streets we have to close. On McClay and surrounding areas. There's, um, 73 plus advanced warnings we have to place, six flaggers. And the Public Works doesn't have the infrastructure, the traffic control equipment. So that's why we would have to hire a company to, um, make this closure. We supplement, we help, and we man certain complicated areas, um, to make sure that it's safe. And so for, I'm sorry, let me, um, for staff time, um, for the last one we did, the staff time was $10,974 on overtime.
What was that amount? I'm sorry?
$10,974.18.
$11,000.
Erica would like that.
And then on the police department side, looking at it from a, uh, an entire event, we, we would have to create an incident, uh, command and control, uh, operation plan, which would mean that we would have to obviously bring in, um, staff. Because should, should we need to respond to an emergency, we need to have the staff available, but we also need a written operation plan. Um, we need to take things into consideration like, um, access to the parade route should an emergency occur. We also have to look at communications, working with our, 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 our fire department partners to ensure that they have what they need in terms of, uh, emergency access, as well as ensuring that we have a police officer presence should something happen, that we're able to appropriately respond to, uh, any incident on the parade route.
Thank you. Um, so, um, I, I guess I would just be mostly interested on what direct and indirect cost that the city would incur, um, if we approve the co-sponsorship. I'm supportive of this, as all the other council members have stated, of course, we want a parade. I know that I said that last year as well, because it's just a beautiful event. But, um, I, I do want to understand a little bit more about what the co-sponsorship, including staff time, street closures, traffic controls, sanitation, signage, um, and all of that. Um, so we could get like a detailed budget estimate. Um, I'm open. I'm also, um, I guess I'm also wanting to know if we have like a cap on what we would, given what we wouldn't. $10,000, um, for the parade in terms of staff time for, um, our Public Works, I would say is not a lot to have the parade, given that we spent, I think it was like almost 6,000 each time we have a mall event. Um, so that would be okay. In terms of the hundred thousand dollars though, I would definitely not be okay with any large amount, given that we did not budget for that. Um, and like we mentioned, right, um, a lot of us had many things in the budget that we wanted to include. And unfortunately, this one didn't make it. We all wanted it, it just didn't make it. Um, and, um, I do have other questions. So in terms of, um, who the organizer would be and not necessarily is at San Fernando, do they also need like insurance, a sponsorship agreement? What else, uh, does, do they, does that organization need? Whoever can answer that?
So, um, Madam Mayor, so if we're gonna do a co-sponsorship, we typically work with a nonprofit organization or an organization that have proper insurance and list the city San Fernando as under insurance liability. We also would have to, um, do other review requirement too, to make sure, um, they are, they'll be able to help us, um, promote the event. And I think one thing that I know Councilmember Lopez brought up was the term Christmas parade. Like, and then we also have to, um, if the council want to move forward with the parade, we need to come up with a name for that. That's not gonna get us into a situation. If you have question, I would like to turn that over to our city attorney to talk more about that. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, I've been interested, full disclosure, I was the one who brought up the issue of holiday parade. Uh, not, not to be politically correct, I like Christmas as well as the next person. But to the extent that the city as a public agency is sponsoring an event, we do have to be careful not to make it look too sectarian.
Even though the White House has like the Easter egg roll and.
Uh, you know, we do, we do need to be cautious. I, I, I can only say that we would need to be inclusive. And I, 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 I wouldn't use, well, I'm not gonna get political, but may, maybe the current standard of what goes on at the White House is not the best.
I think a bunch of administrations have had like Easter egg hunts at the White House and other events, but.
I would just simply make the point that you would, you would want to make sure that there was some inclusivity for other faiths.
But I mean, like, you know, Pacoima has the logo, our councilwoman Rodriguez, and has also Christmas, has named Christmas parade. So, you know, call how it is. If it's a pride parade, call pride parade. If we call Christmas parade, call Christmas.
I mean, I've never had any problems with saying Christmas.
We include everybody, we respect every religion, every group, you know, like, uh, this is not, you know, you know, we have to respect everybody believes.
I, I, I'm not saying this to disparage anybody's faith.
That's okay.
Trying to do my job.
No, yeah, yeah, we have you here for your independent opinion.
He's just advising us, so.
So.
Well, thank you for that. Um, so my next question is, if we do approve this, um, I guess could we treat it then as like a pilot phase approach? Meaning like, um, having a city, having the city have limited commitment? But I guess that would then pose, how soon can staff turn around the questions? Uh, and, um, Councilmember Lopez and her team, um, have those answered, right? Um, so when would that need to happen so that this parade could potentially happen in a month?
I, I also have another question that I want to add to that. And, and in terms of the organizer.
Can we get this one answered first? So that way, like, I just want to have an understanding of where we're at.
I think first staff would need to understand the scope of the parade. We need the map, we need the tra, traffic control plan, um, approval from fire department. Like, we need to have a better understanding what level of support we need to provide. Because when a traffic control plan is submitted, we'll need at least a couple of days to review it internally and think, make sure that we have everything planned out to make sure we're, we're help supporting an event and keep it safe. I think safety is our biggest concern here. And to coordinate with Metro, that's gonna be, um, something that we'll have to, not sure if that's something that staff will look into, or is that the organization gonna work with to get Metro approval on rerouting the bus route? And if so, then how do we inform the community of the reroute, the bus route? Is Metro doing that? We're doing that? Or there's questions that I think if the council wished to proceed, we'll have to have a meeting with the organization that's organizing this event and understand what they're willing to do and what's the missing gap.
Yeah, and I'm supportive of the collabora.
Go ahead, you've got it.
I'm supportive of the colla, collaboration at this time, meaning that this could also be used for next years, right? If we don't move forward with it now. Um, as we all are supportive of the event, I'm coming from a perspective of let's ask questions first and see, see how that turns out. And if it's a positive, great, we can host it. And if it's not, then we won't make that decision as it comes.
And if it's not, then we won't make that decision as it comes. But because we do not have all that information at this time, I don't want to just turn it away. Because we do have organizations that are willing to put in the work, whether it's a big parade or maybe just something, um, at the park, whatever that may be. Uh, I am very supportive of that. Or, you know what comes to mind? Um, when we do the, the baseball league parade, um, that's a, a parade of maybe like 10 cars, if that, and it runs through the park. And it's a beautiful event. Um, I always wish that more community members are aware of it because it goes through the park and then it goes down the mall. Um, but again, uh, it's not to a huge scale, right? We're not having like a thousand participants or, uh, community members. But we can see how we could scale a parade or an event a little, um, down if, um, not everything is in place in this year. So I am supportive of that. Um, let me see if I have just one more question in terms of all of this. Yeah, I think one of my biggest things, and I, I think I, oh no, so one of my, one of my things was, uh, the sanitation and cleanup, but I did see that on the, uh, permit, uh, request. Um, so, uh, council member Lopez, or is the organization saying that they will take over for the cleanup?
We have already one other, uh, local organization who's willing to volunteer, like, like 25 volunteers for this event.
Okay, thank you. And then a question for staff. Um, if the city council does not approve a scope, uh, cosponsorship, can this event still be permitted under the special event application? And not through the city council, but through our staff desk?
So there is a special event process that we go through, and, um, that needs to be reviewed and make sure that they have the capacity they need to host the event. And if so, then it could be approved. But we have to review it by our public works and our police to make sure it's something that, um, could occur and safe, and safety is not an issue.
Perfect, okay. And the reason why I asked that is I want to ensure that not only, um, you know, does each council member know that they can do a special event with other organizations as long as they have a permit, but as long as it's approved through the city and as well that businesses can also apply for special event permits, correct?
I'm actually want to clarify that it does need our city cosponsorship in there because we'll be using our city resources to shut down the street. So shutting down the street would be supported through our public works team.
Correct, but then what I'm, I guess, uh, for this one specifically, but if it doesn't become a parade and it's in private property of like a business or something like that, then would it require cosponsorship?
If it's on private property and it doesn't require co- closure of the street, that could proceed without cosponsorship.
Okay, and that's, and I just wanted to make that clear so that way it's a different option as well. Thank you.
I have a question regarding the insurance. Since, uh, council member Lopez is the organizer, would she be the one providing the insurance?
It was mistaken on the application. It's gonna be Celia Rivas, not myself.
So you have someone else, so that she wouldn't be providing the insurance? Because I wasn't sure if it's your nonprofit, or have a salva, or?
No, that, that is Emprende. Emprende is a nonprofit, and the founder is Celia Rivas.
Okay.
And Mujeres Alfa is my, uh, nonprofit, but it's not in, it's not, not related with this event.
So you're not the organizer?
No.
Okay, you, you, you should have told us that in the beginning too. That would have been good.
No, it's not.
Okay, and she has the insurance for it?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Madam Mayor, what I was gonna recommend is it sounds like, um, we need the list, and council member Lopez needs the list of things that are needed. So, um, did, I think you already drafted the spec- the permit request. So can that be submitted and then that list be generated of what is needed? The traffic control plan, the traffic control company, the public work staff, the insurance, and then the cost next to it, so we understand who's taking care of what? Like, what is the request? Because it sounds like it is the traffic control plan and the, um, staff is like 32,000 approximately, um, cost. So just so we're, and then I don't know what insurance runs, and then, um, I don't know what else there is. So can we have that? I don't, I don't know if you know what else?
No, no. Yeah, because, you know, every time that a nonprofit go through the, the city sometimes it's really challenging. I have previous, uh, uh, situation where, um, we organized a, a family event and we didn't get the permit until two days before. And even the application was full with all the information. So that's why I brought it to the council, so you can see it what is the proposal for this nonprofit, which is not my nonprofit, it's somebody else, but I, 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 I asked, they asked me if I can authorize this so I can get a cosponsor for the city. And they have insurance, they have everything and, um, legal to go forward to this kind of parade. But, yeah.
So I guess, and then also the timeline, because I don't know, um, like the traffic control companies, their availability, or how much time they need to map it out. So is there to do that, and then we can, um, then we'll see what the request is. And then you'll see if you even, if it works for you.
Yeah, exactly.
Because if it's like $40,000 each side, that's probably too much, you know? But we can, um, I don't know, is that something we want to do?
I had no idea that this engineering plan costs $22,000 for an event like that. Like, that blows my mind. Uh, I don't, I mean, maybe we have discussed that in the past, but it doesn't ring a bell. And so just the fact that so much goes into this, and all the driveways that are gonna be closed really surprises me as well. So I think that it's fair for us to ask, and for her to have the whole list of what needs to be done, because she doesn't have, if this is like all new information, it might change the ability to get it done this year. It might change the finances. Um, but, you know, I, I feel that I try really hard to ensure that everyone's voice is heard. And I don't want you to feel that this is any event to prevent you from having this. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything correctly and that, not just that it's within our budget, yes, that's important too, but also that people are safe and that we aren't cutting corners to, to get it done, uh, uh, this year versus next year.
No, I totally understand.
Um, if I can recommend that maybe we could continue this item, because Council Mayor Lopez said maybe we could bring it back at the next meeting?
Yeah.
That if we could continue this item to a next meeting to, for us to have a better understanding of what it takes to have a Christmas parade? And start, I guess, Maribel wanted to add on something.
Uh, just a couple of points of clarification. So the, the number I threw out is not only the traffic, uh, control plan, but it's also the implementation of the closures.
Got it.
So this includes all the fencing, all the barricades, all the advanced warning signage, the, uh, the message boards that they put up on the main, um, intersections of the route. So it's not just the creation of the map, it's the creation of the map and the implementation of the plan. Um, and then in regards to council member Garcia's questions regarding, regarding the special event application, staff, actually today we reviewed it and we sent it out. So there's a process, right? It gets routed to other departments, they provide their feedback, and then it goes back to the applicant with a list of, you know, either questions for clarification or where is the map, where is your emergency plan, where's your safety plan, where's? So there's a list of questions, and that was actually sent back to the organizer today. So as soon as we get more information, then staff reroutes that to all the departments so we can get cost estimates, um, put together and then sent back to the, uh, to the applicant for the special event.
Actually, uh, I just want to clarify that we just start routing it today. I don't think we provide comment to the organ- back to the organizer yet. We just started the route today.
Did.
So what we'll have to do is have our department, I know tomorrow's a holiday, so it won't be reviewed. So once our department, our team comes back, we'll have them take a look at it and...
Well, city manager, the, I think they pushed send on the email, sending it back already. Did you?
Oh, we sent a list back to the organizer already?
Yes, Maria and I, because we got, we got feedback from some of the departments. So the, just that, again, for the sake of transparency and clarification, we did receive feedback from engineering. And because there was a lot of questions in regards to some of the missing pieces for an event of this magnitude, we needed to get that back to, uh, back to the organizer as soon as possible. So, I'm sorry.
Okay, thanks for confirming that. So those are questions from engineering, but we'll still need to share comments from police and community development, um, from our risk manager side for liability, for insurance, all that as well.
Correct.
And that will be forthcoming. We can definitely take a look at it on Wednesday when we return and continue to work with the organizer on this and continue this item to the next meeting so we can have a better understanding.
Thank you. Thank you so much for, uh, all you, you support and willing to listen to this. And whether it happened this year or happened next year, but it will happen. You know, it's something that, you know, I will never give up when, something that, uh, I have so many people supporting, especially the resident for the city of San Fernando, that been want to have something here in San Fernando, not in Pacoima. Here, San Fernando first, San Fernando second, San Fernando third. Now, go nowhere, here in San Fernando.
I have a question regarding the traffic control plan. Who pays for that?
Since this is, we, our insistence that the organizer would pay for that and we would just supplement our public work staff, because if the direction from council is for us to pay for it, then we have to reach out to the traffic control company and figure out what that cost is. So that's gonna be additional cost for staff. So that's why we asked the organizer, what's your traffic control plan?
Okay, just wanted to make that clear. Thank you. All right, so then we'll move on to the next item? Do we have clear direction on this, or do we, right, because we're moving on?
It, we're continuing the item to the next meeting.
Continuing this item to the next meeting, which will be on?
Monday.
Monday.
So we'll continue this item and staff will bring back more information.
Okay, thank you. That would be Monday, Monday, November 17th. So.
And just to clarify, this information will be given to the organizer beforehand, not at the meeting, so that that way the organizer can get their ducks in a row?
Madam Mayor, yes, um, that's why, um, Maribel mentioned, we already shared the list already from engineering, but we still have to share the list from all the other department. And since we're expediting this, that's the reason why we're not holding back the list. Usually we will send them a comprehensive list from all the department, just because we know the tight timeline. Typically, this application gets submitted at least 30 days before the event, right? So we can, 60 days, okay, 60 days before event. So we can route to all department and put together a comprehensive list. But we have a short timeframe, so we're giving them comments as they come in, so the organizer can be prepared.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and consideration regarding immigration custom enforcement at the Home Depot parking lot. And this item was placed on the agenda by council member Lopez. Please provide your, uh, presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Recently, I, uh, indicated immigration enforcement activity raised in the Home Depot parking lot. Community members have expressed concerns about safety, civil rights, and potential intimidation. Fear among the residents, particularly immigrant community, about seizing public space and workplaces. Potential impact our families include children's, employers, concern about civil rights violated, violation, and improper procedure during the enforcement action. Ensure communities safe while respecting federal, um, laws over immigration enforcement. Discuss options for supporting residents and provide accurate information about rights. Consider le- uh, city level of policy and resolution to protect civil liberties. Possibility action from staff and direction. Conduct community outreach and education about civil rights and safety during the enforcement operation. Coordinate with the local enforcement, enforcement to ensure public safety without overstepping legal boundaries. Explore, explore partnership with the legal aid organization immigrant, immigrants, advocacy groups. Evaluate potential city statement, resolution, and policy, expressing concern and support for affecting residents. Communication and messages, maintaining clear, factual, and neutral messages to the public. Ensure transparency and avoid inflammation, tension to the community. Provide guidance for the city staff and handle public injuries and concern related to immigration enforcement. Safety and civil rights consideration. Encourage reporting any civil rights violation to appropriate agency. Promote non-retaliation to protect for the resident or society rights. Monitor the situation for any escalation for many requirement further city respond. Um, the next steps, the, um, we, we, I would like to, the staff to do outreach and recommendation future council consideration to schedule follow-up days and situation in bold. Some of the resident send me, uh, texts and calls regarding the situation in the, uh, Home Depot. And some people, sometimes afraid, they're afraid to come into the public and make these comments. And it's our responsibility to listen to, to all the resident, whether they're legal or maybe they're not. But here in the city of San Fernando, I just want to make it clear that our police department, they're not collaborated with ICE or any agency. Um, yes, our city is not sanitary city yet, but we working in that path. I'm immigrant and I so empathetic with our immigrant community. So, you know, you can come in private, you can send email, you can call any council member and ask them to do what we need to do. And I'm glad we have so many, the way for this item. And I would like, if it is possible right now, uh, Mayor, to open a public comment on this item?
We've already had public comment at the beginning of the meeting, so it's not, you know, I mean, they've had that opportunity to give it.
Um, Mr. Padilla, everything that is a item in the agenda, does the public make a comment?
No, depend, it depends on how the city council organizes its agenda. There are some cities who accept public comment on every item. Uh, but San Fernando, like a lot of cities, has a single public comment at the beginning of the meeting, the only exception being for separate public hearings. Um, the council has discretion if it wishes to reopen public comment on a particular item. Um, but you cannot be, you know, you, you have to do so even handed, but, and... Yeah, I would, I would ask people to refrain from clapping, please.
I'd like to hear what, I mean, um, I'll just go around council and see their comments regarding your item, and then we'll see what happens. Council member Garcia?
I'll defer to hearing from everyone.
Council member Farado?
You're asking for public comments, or are you asking for questions about?
If you have any, anything you'd like to ask coun- council member Lopez or any, you know, I don't know.
I'm always interested in learning the best strategies in how we can respond during these challenging times. I think that some of the people who came here today have a misunderstanding of our police department's involvement in this. Um, our police department does not collaborate with ICE. And they're very proactive in meeting the needs of the community, whether people are documented or undocumented. And so I wanted to, to say that first. Uh, unfortunately, we have, um, three more years of Trump. And hopefully only three more years, or preferably less, of some of these crazy, unimaginable and horrific policies that he's put into place. I understand the pain and the concern that it brings to the community to have these repeated occurrences, whether it's at the Home Depot or other places in San Fernando. And if there are ways that we can address this, I would love to know whether it comes from other elected representatives who have found effective methods or, um, our chief or other law enforcement personnel in the county. Um, so I'm here to learn about this to make sure that we have the best policies in place for the city.
Vice Mayor Solario?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, I, I really love how the community comes out and, and speaks up about these issues. Um, we all know that we've seen, uh, a, uh, increase in ICE activity, especially in San Fernando. I would even say that the city of San Fernando, us being so small, is being targeted continuously. And it is incredibly... And it is incredibly important that us as council members up here are making good decisions for the public, or at least collaborating with organizations that are standing at the Home Depot and other local areas, day in and day out, and telling them what their legal rights are and how they can support in this community process. I know in my conversations with the chief, he has been open and willing to collaborate with organizations that are at the Home Depot and other places, so that we can ensure that our community is safe. So I, I guess my question, or I want to hand it over to the chief and say, how do we prepare our community, not only those residents that might not have the proper documentation, but those individuals that are standing in this room today that are supporting these other people in our community?
Those are very great, great questions. So we got to begin with understanding that we are a municipal police department that enforces state law and local law. We do not engage in enforcing federal law. And we also have an obligation, based on the constitution, that there are layers to law enforcement. Subsequently, it is important for us, it is important for our community to understand what our role is in public safety. And I think one of the things that we should do more of is educate our community as to what our role is as the San Fernando Police Department. We have policies in place, California under SB fifty-four is considered a sanctuary state. But we know that despite this label or being a sanctuary state, the federal government continues to engage in immigration enforcement activities. The city of Los Angeles is a sanctuary city, but yet they're experiencing immigration enforcement. The city of Huntington Park, the city of Baldwin Park. So declaring sanctuary city in and of itself does not provide any additional safety. The city has already adopted multiple resolutions to ensure that we are not cooperating, even indirectly, with immigration officials or federal agents with respect to immigration enforcement. But I think there needs to be maybe more outreach and education, so that our, our community understands what our role is and what it is we don't do.
Thank you. I think I was more leaning towards a answering question in terms of, what can the police provide right now to maybe some of the individuals in here in terms of education?
Well, I will put it out to the people who are here. Let's host a meeting.
Okay.
Let's host it in council chambers. Well, we will go to where you're at. I mean, we, we, we need to have a nexus to San Fernando. The San Fernando Police Department is not going to go to Northridge or Chatsworth, that's LAPD's jurisdiction. But if there is, if, if there is a desire to hold some kind of town forum, we can do that here. We can invite, i- if there are members of the community that are from Los Angeles, maybe invite a representative from the LAPD to talk about what LAPD does. And, and, and we in turn will talk about what San Fernando does.
Love that.
And we can invite the district attorney, see if they'll send a representative. And, and the LA County Sheriff to talk about what goes on in the jail. So a lot of this is, is education and understanding. So we are open to doing that.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that was going to lead into my next point, right? Some of the people here have stated, you know, what is Save San Fernando and what are we doing? And I was going to ask that we hold a community meeting, so that everyone is informed of what we are doing, what we're capable of doing, and what we are not going to do. And how organizations that are here today with us can plan around that if need be. I do know that an organization here in San Fernando, Puebla Salud, host is, hosts every Tuesday evening at their center, where they have a lot of participation from not only San Fernando community, but other residents from the city of LA. And they work together to come up with plans on how they can support our immigrant community. So I'm glad that we are open to hosting that conversation here with you all today. And, and for a future date.
Madam Vice Mayor, I would just like to add, we may put something out, and sometimes we don't garner the interest that we're hoping to get. So I would, and I'm not going to say challenge, but I would encourage the people who are here tonight, assemble a meeting. We will go to where the people want us to go. And we will meet them where they are at. And the goal is to get as many people in a room as possible, so we can have some dialogue. And we want people to be heard, and we want to hear their fears, and we want to dispel rumors. And we want those who attend to understand what our role is, but also what our limitations are.
Thank you. In terms of public safety and employer practices and worker protections, given this agenda item, I think I want to see what else can the city do to promote practices that could keep people, residents of the city, safe. So I, I just put that out there for consideration of this council. I would also like to state that if we, when we do have that meeting, that we're not only monitoring what the conversations are, but that we are also evaluating what outcomes and actions, if any, are taken moving forward, so that we're able to present that not only to the individuals here, but everybody across the city of San Fernando. Those are my comments for right now. Thank you.
You know, I just want to point out that, you know, in regards to being a sanctuary city, you know, that we voted, and then we didn't call San Fernando a sanctuary city. But we do have all of the, the rules that apply to the state of California. And we added the two that were the, the sharing of data and the use of our facilities, that ICE cannot use our facilities, nor rent them from us, and that we do not share our, our information or, uh, from our residents with ICE. So those are the two added things. And, and so our entire policy or data information that we have is meets all of California SB fifty-four. So I want to point that out. And, and I think that the idea of a meeting is, is a great idea, because I, I think that maybe a lot of you here in the back are not San Fernando residents. You know, some of you may be, but I, I have an idea that a lot of you are not. But I think that it's, this meeting would be really good, because understanding how the city of San Fernando works and how it works with the city of LA, being that we're here at the Home Depot, right on the borderline, and how the sheriff's department works. I, I think that having that understanding, how, how we work with them, they work with us, and what our limits are as the city of San Fernando, and how we respect their policies and vice versa. I think that would be really important for you to understand where our boundaries are in terms of target and the office max and all that. I think that would be really good. It would be a really good meeting and get, give you all a better understanding of that. And like, like the chief said, you're welcome to come in and we can use this chamber and, and have an open dialogue. And the chief is willing to answer any question you might have. He, he's amazing in answering the questions, that he's got an answer for just about everything. So, you know, if you're interested, you know, stay, stay and give, you can give the city clerk your name, address, emails, and we can, or emails and your phone number, so we can get back to you and, and notify you. If you're interested in a meeting, we'd like to invite you all to come in and, and we'll dialogue with you. Because we, we are concerned about our immigrants. And those of you that are at Home Depot, that you're feeding the, I guess you call them the jornaleros is what I've heard. But I think you're doing great work. You're notifying the, the public, you're notifying the immigrants that are there. They choose to go there. They want to be there. They want to find a job. I think that you're doing great work. Who's going to tell them if it's not you that's out there, you know, risking yourselves? You're not working, you're not with your families, you're, you're there, or you're, you're not doing your other personal things. But you choose to be there to protect the immigrants. And I think that that's wonderful of you, you know, and. Anyway, I think it's, you know, just don't get yourselves in trouble, so you can do your work, because it's really important, even those of you that protest, don't get in trouble, because you need to, you do need to protest. But do it where you don't get yourself in trouble, where you don't get hurt. So that work continues, because we need to, you know, get to this end goal and, and so this can all end for all of us. That's all I have to say, so.
So I guess, I don't know if now is the appropriate time to open up my item, but it was to, so when I said about the budget, like, was it a budgeted item? I know that we make an exception for emergencies. So that's what we did with our San Fernando Together program. It was an emergency, and so we invested a lot of money in supporting our community. And again, I don't know if a lot of the people here are from San Fernando, because we have been trying to shout out and promote the resources that we have made available. So knowing that some people are scared to get groceries, we invested thousands of dollars to a nonprofit. They will deliver groceries to your home. And I want to make sure everyone knows that that's available, because we've invested in it and we helped that nonprofit get a fifty thousand dollar grant, so they can provide free food, groceries to families, families in need in general, but also families who are in this situation. And I know Lorraine's in charge and she takes calls at times, she speaks English and Spanish, and she regularly delivers groceries to families. So if people don't know about that, we want to make sure they know about it. We also invested money. We have this program across the board again. But if you're affected by the immigration raids, we do give individuals money and families, I think it's just under five hundred dollars. Is that right?
Five hundred for family and?
Five hundred for families. And the reason why we didn't go up to five hundred is because that triggers IRS reporting. One, we don't want to get those people in trouble with the IRS with misreporting. Two, we've heard reports that the administration is using their federal databases to look for people. And we don't want to put anyone on that list. So it's just under the amount that they would have to report it to the IRS. We're giving that to families who have been, or individuals who have been affected. And then, third, if you've been affected, we're also covering your rent. If it affected you and your work and you haven't been able to make your mortgage or your rent, we actually have programs that are paying that for people. Again, the city has invested in that. So I don't know if everyone knows that, but I think it's important, we have made those resources available, that we make that known to people. And there's above and beyond, right? We brought the Mexican consulate here to help people, and it is packed every single day, hundreds of appointments. They told us that we're the only city where people don't cancel, where it's, they love our location, they ask to stay longer. And we, our county supervisor made that happen, helped us. But we're just, we are working so hard, and if people don't know that, that was why I brought forward. We have these resources. We're also about to get that five million dollar grant to help people with home buyer assistance and home rehab. I want to make sure that's promoted. So I don't know if now is the appropriate time to open that, but I guess when we get to it, that was the purpose of that, to make sure we're, I know, again, our staff is overworked, we're having our staff put out those social media posts. Maybe we need a company who gets it out and gets it out to the right people, so that they know that the city of San Fernando is putting our own money into helping our residents. Thank you.
So, anything, any other comments?
Yes, I do. I, I have a question for our chief. Chief, when there is a confrontation between that, that people, there are, the ICE, that supports for the president and the immigrants. If somebody come and with masks and kidnapping our families, and what is the authority that you and your department has? Because if somebody come and grab my daughter and I say, you know, they didn't identify themselves, they have a mask, they didn't have the name, they don't have the badge, they don't have anything. So in that situation, what is going to be the standing for your department? Because, you know, and, in Chicago, in Chicago, the, the mayor make it clear, you know, if you, they will not tolerate that conduct from ICE, because there is not official, legal official with you, they have the badge and they have the name. Some people, they just go there and hunting our, our families and kidnapping our, our, our daughters, our sons. A few students from schools are just pick it up from walking the dog or the lady from the tamalas. So what is going to be the approach from our, our, our police department in that situation? How do you department will respond to that?
So, th- those are all, that's one big question, so there's multiple parts. So let me go, go back to confrontation between people who are there to support immigrants and maybe people who are not there to support immigrants. And we recently had a confrontation at, at Home Depot between two individuals. And I always revert back to what, what we learned in kindergarten, in the sense that we got to keep our body parts and our hands to ourselves. And despite the fact that people may be agitated or upset, it's important not to, to devolve into violence. And the best thing to do is to call us. I'm going to always say, call the police, which leads me into now, a report comes in, which has not happened necessarily in San Fernando, but it has happened in Los Angeles. And I was just reading an article in the paper, LA Times today, of an incident that occurred in Fullerton, where this person was following apparently an, an ICE operation, and one of the ICE agents got out, pulled out a gun, an off-duty Fullerton officer, or an officer who was leaving court, saw the confrontation, got out, confronted the person with the gun, who ends up being an ICE agent. So it's in the LA Times, but all of this to say that these types of things happen. But the best thing to do is to call the police. We are here to do that. So if you believe that there's any criminal activity, you call. This is Chief Perez, I don't know if, if it was picked up on, but I will call the federal agents, or I will call the head person over at the federal government, who's responsible for this, and, and, and just at minimum ask, are you guys doing an operation in San Fernando? I have done that, and I've shared my frustration and displeasure with the way things are being done. But these are policies that are occurring at the federal level. And we also, I was looking at, how could a person file a complaint against a federal agent? I understand the frustration, and local government is where people, I mean, you can come to City Hall and speak your voice. You can't go to Washington DC per se in, 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 in one evening and go speak your voice. So, you know, directing that to the appropriate officials, how does one file a complaint against a federal agent? We can talk about that at our community meeting. Our federal representatives, invite them to our community meeting and have them answer questions about, what are you doing as my representative to protect us? Because this is at the federal level. This isn't at the municipal level. We are doing everything we possibly can to protect our residents within the confines of the law. It is important. And when you talked about, what can our people do without necessarily getting in trouble? And again, I, I shouldn't be teaching this, maybe an attorney, but how do we peacefully protest? Should you be confronting ICE agents in the middle of an operation? What type of legal trouble are you going to get into if you do that? Is there a potential for escalation and even a shooting, which has happened, where people get hurt? So there are systems in place already, and we have to use those systems. We have to know what those systems are. And this is where you get our, our federal representatives, you get civil rights attorneys, you get other people to file these complaints, you get people to use the systems that are in place to address these issues at the federal level.
Well, this is just the beginning. Hopefully, with your help and our city manager can continue having those community forums and bring those lawyers or representatives. and bring those lawyers or representatives from the federal level and ask them. Yeah, because in our end, we do whatever is in our hands to provide support for the residents with food, with financial assistance. And I also want to be clear and transparency, when you fill out the application, you know, submitted in San Fernando, because our, Los Angeles has the same program. So just making sure, if you used to meet any application, make sure what the application go. Because I, I hear people go to Home Depot and handing the applications, but they didn't hear any, anything back, if they will granted that, that a support or not. So I just want to make sure, you know, el oso es en español. Cuando ustedes llenan una aplicación, asegúrense que viene para la ciudad de San Fernando y no para la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Porque si una aplicación viene para ayudarlos a ustedes, si viene a San Fernando, nosotros les podemos dar una respuesta. Pero si esa aplicación se fue para Los Ángeles, nosotros no somos responsables. So, pueden venir a la oficina aquí, al departamento de finanzas, a la persona encargada es Erika, o también pueden acercarse a nuestra city manager para que ella les haga el follow-up. Porque si me preocupa mucho que llenen aplicaciones y no les estén dando el apoyo econ- económico que necesitan, y también si necesitan ayuda con la comida, esa información no la podemos dar. Les podemos dar un número a cuantas familias estamos apoyando, pero no les podemos decir nombres ni apellidos porque eso es confidencial. Y eso fue una de las reglas que nosotros pusimos cuando fue este programa de San Fernando Together, de que no íbamos a colectar ninguna información. And I just, you know, one of the programs for the San Fernando Together, we're not going to collect any information for the families, right, Mrs. Kidd?
That's correct. We don't collect information that we're not comfortable in sharing. We only collect information that we know, if we get requested to share the information, we could share. Madam Mayor, I also want to announce to the audience too, that in the back of the room, we have some rec cards for Knowing Your Rights cards, and also the program for San Fernando Together of how to apply for the application and more information is on the back of the room. So I encourage everyone to grab a copy of it from the back. Thank you.
Anything else on this item?
I had more.
One more?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. And just so we clarify real quickly, Ms. Canica, can you let it, let the public know in questions in regarding to Ignite the Light of Hope, in terms of the groceries? I know we're doing food distributions, but how would they apply, if they could apply, for them, for the groceries to be delivered, given that a lot of these organizations work with families that are not going out to the grocery stores?
So we have two. One is the onsite food distribution that we do at Las Palmas Park Rec Park. The other one is direct food grocery delivery. And for that one, we encourage everyone, whoever is interested, to contact Lorraine at Ignite the Light directly, for her to coordinate that delivery.
So does the Ignite the Light of Hope have a current partnership in regards to San Fernando, where these residents from San Fernando can come apply to get those groceries delivered, is my direct question?
Yes, that is part of our San Fernando Together program.
Okay, and they would come to where? Can you just clarify where they would come, what are the steps to doing that?
They could come to our BCRC, and we can help guide them the process on reaching out to Ignite the Light, Ignite the Light of Hope directly, or they can call the phone number that's on the flyer in the backyard, or email our resource center, our business inquiry resource, or call that number, and then we can help guide them.
Thank you.
Good connection. We also have, I think, on our social media, Lorraine's contact information directly as well too, which I do not have with me.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make it clear that where they can come and ask for those groceries to be delivered to the homes versus these individuals having to take up a lot of time and space of their own to do it. So I guess I just have some suggestions in terms of what this meeting could be. And I'm open, because I want to provide, it sounds like the council is open to having a community meeting, so I want to provide some direction and seeing if my colleagues are on the same page. So in terms of providing, we, I would give direction to provide an update to, one, San Fernando Together and what that entails, and just resources, step by step, on how to get these resources, whether that is in a pamphlet or just a printout, so they can distribute to those families that are in need, as well as an update to Save San Fernando and what the city is continuing to do and what they cannot do. In terms of collaborating with other organizations, I think that we could coordinate with relevant individuals that are here in this room and others, and put out that notice to letting them know that we are open to collaborating, and clarifying the city's role, as well as establishing a liaison with the city to engage with external agencies. In terms of tracking incidents, I know that some of the individuals that are staying at the Home Depot and taking different shifts could possibly have better data than we would have, because we're not collecting that data, at least at this time, I don't believe so. And also engaging our local businesses on risk management mitigation. So in that, I want us to also provide, not only for people here, but for our businesses in other local areas, how they can mitigate their risk. So essentially, what can they do, how do we provide support for that, okay? Those are my current suggestions. Thank you.
Vice, Vice Mayor, just one point of clarification. We are tracking ICE operations in San Fernando, and what we do normally is, we'll get a report or multiple reports, either on social media or calls to our dispatch center. Then we send an officer out or multiple officers out, and then we try to validate, whether it's through eyewitness's account or through video, if in fact it was an ICE operation, we've had, or a federal operation. We've had incidents where people have called us, and it's LAPD serving a drug search warrant, but people believe that it's Homeland Security. Or we will be coordinating with the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation to do parole checks, and people assume that because the correctional agents are dressed in green, that it's their federal agents. So, well, many times, we have to validate. And so what people put out initially on social media may not always be what, or may not be accurate. So it takes us some time to be able to validate if information, or validate information one way or the other. But we are tracking.
Thank you. And then to that point, I guess I wanted to make another suggestion. So the city of San Fernando sends a text alert. So that way, if you live in San Fernando and you're signed up for our email slash text message alert, you would get an alert saying that there's ICE activity. But my question is, how soon after you get a report, does a typical police officer get out there to confirm that report?
Now, all of that depends on the calls for service. And again, we, we have four police officers who are out and about, that's our minimum deployment. And so if our police officers are tied up on traffic accidents or handling domestic violence or whatever it may be, there may be a delayed response. But usually, well, especially if it's a priority one call, where we believe there's a kidnapping, we believe somebody's being assaulted, our goal is to get there within four minutes or less, but many times, we're there within two minutes, three minutes. We try to validate as quickly as possible, we try to locate people. The last operation that occurred, I actually went out there personally. Some people are reluctant to talk, so it's getting people to even open up to us, or sometimes people will come up to us. So there's a delay validating, and then going through the appropriate channels to make sure that the council is aware, to make sure that the person going to put out the San Fernando alert is aware. So there might be a 10 to 15 minute delay between the actual validation to getting it out into the community.
Okay, and I'm glad that you've stated that. I'm glad that we're working really hard to get out there as soon as possible, given our capacity and the calls that are coming in. I will ask though, that staff, if we can, post that alert a lot sooner. So in the past, every time that we have posted an alert, I don't get the text message until like five or six hours later. At that point, I don't believe that it serves its purpose to advise people and let them know that there is ICE activity. By that point, it's, they're gone, and, I mean, somebody already got arrested. So I am hopeful that once we get a call, and if we can confirm that call within 10 minutes, that we are advising the public, given that we're already doing the text alert, that we're doing it a lot sooner and not hours later.
Vice Mayor, one of the things that we have to be very mindful of is that we're not impeding, interfering, or obstructing. So we need to be sure that as a city, as a police department, we are not, it is not perceived that we are intentionally trying to impede or delay or obstruct a federal operation. So many times, by the time we validate information, the agents are already gone. And so we just need to be mindful that if an operation is occurring, that we need to balance notifying the community with ensuring that we're not putting our police officers or our city in any type of legal bind with the federal government.
Sure, and I agree with that, but I think also to your point, seeing if they're already gone, it's, what, I guess, are we saying that it serves no purpose then to text people and let them know? Or does it serve a purpose? And if it does, I wish that, my request is that we're sending it out earlier and not later. And it is not to impede or obstruct, it is just to inform the public of what is occurring in San Fernando. Thank you.
Okay, well, well, I would not, I personally would not ask the chief or any of our police officers or anyone to break the law. That's all I have to, you know, that's what I would say, you know, or in.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, I know this is a very important issue, but if we could please refrain from, from shouting from the back, please.
Okay, so.
Ma'am, ma'am, please respectfully.
Are we done with this agenda item?
I just want to understand what the direction actually is, and if there's agreement on certain direction, because there were a lot of recommendations, but I wasn't clear where we ended.
Well, my end, well, we request that chief to have, and our city manager to have like a community forum, invite that a community organizations like Chirla, Mexican-American Legal Defense, or some of the groups they're already patrolling and helping in that, in this race to the, to the community. And we need to sit at the table, and we had to discuss how we're going to support and how we're going to work in this crisis. Because, you know, a lot of the community members couldn't make it on time to make the public comments. You know, I feel like, you know, it's our obligation to listen to them, what they had to say, because, you know, that, that's important, because we cannot do everything by ourselves and together, you know. Like sometimes if you, they don't feel safe to come here and express themselves, and they feel ignored. You know, that is not a good feeling for our constituents, to feel that, that we don't listen. And that's why I, I brought it to the table today, so we can listen to the constituent. And in the past, every time that we have an item, you know, like this, public has an opportunity to express themselves. You know, at least one minute, you know, like, listen to them, make a bit of difference. But, you know, it's up to the mayor, it's after the council members, how they want to continue in this, in this. But that will be my recommendation.
Madam Mayor, can I recap that direction? So that is the direction for us to host a community forum here in the council chamber, where we'll invite other organization to come and sit in on the forum to help engage, to engage with the community and help answer the questions of what we can do as local organization, what we could do and provide. Also, we'll have a, maybe an attorney here to help provide legal advice if there's a question that comes up on what they can do as well. So I believe that's the direction for tonight?
Yes.
Lopez, was that your direction?
Yeah, and maybe somebody from the civil rights?
Yes, Chirla, to help.
Chirla or LCRU?
Okay. We'll reach out to the organization, and my recommendation would be to do it after the holiday, so it gives us enough time to engage the community and also promote the meeting, so that way we have a nice turnout for the meeting and work with other organizations for them to participate in here as well.
So we will, will we have a sign-in sheet for them to list their name and email their phone number, so we can connect with them? Or how do we want to do this? Are you just going to pass out a flyer? How do you want to do the handle this? Or just go to drop off flyers over at Home Depot? Is that how you'd like to handle that?
I think it'd be good if we, if we advertise maybe like a QR code for registration purposes and have people.
Put on.
VP.
We'll promote it on our social media, through our email, and we'll also have flyers available as well too, that could be drop off.
All right, sounds good.
And then we'll actually ask them to help us promote it as well too, to get more attendance.
Yes. Yes.
So that's the direction I have, so council agree? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so it's going to be 10 o'clock, so I'd say that we, we move the rest of the items to our next meeting. Does that sound good to anybody?
One of them is a bit timely. It is the number 11, which is the item with the mall. And we did get an email from them stating that, or at least from Mr. Ross, that they appear to be in agreement with some of it with certain conditions. So I just wanted to see if we can at least do that item.
All right, so item number 11 is discussion and direction regarding the city council action as recommended strategies to strengthen local economic development in the San Fernando Mall area. Use of business in improvement area B funds, review the administrative action regarding the San Fernando Mall Association Incorporated, AKA Mall Assessment District Incorporated agreement, and consideration to adopt a resolution affirming related administrative actions.
Can we clarify, what is the timely issue on this?
It is a 60-day notice process, and so if we're going to start 60 days, then that would, if we wait another meeting, it would delay that 60 days.
I see.
Yeah.
All right.
So that.
Council member Farado?
Yes, so we did receive a, a letter from the mall, as I mentioned. All council members are in receipt of it, and we can make that part of the record. Item, part D of this agenda item, I don't necessarily see us needing to take a vote on. Part D was simply a resolution, and I had a very short resolution. The reason I included a resolution is, I wasn't sure how convoluted this process would get. And maybe there would have been some principles that we, that we all could agree on, that we could have memorialized in the, in the form of a, of a resolution. Since I think that this process will be a little bit shorter, given that at least appears the mall seems to be in agreement with this, I don't see any need for item D. So there's really two main issues at point. One of them is terminating our agreement with the San Fernando Mall Association, Inc. And the other one is renaming the ad hoc to focus on the San Fernando Mall as a whole, as well as the Improvement Area B Funds. And this item has been before the city council, not in this fashion, but just discussion of the mall over the years. As I started to research this issue recently, one of the things that really stood out to me was actually the name of the organization. It isn't the San Fernando Mall Association, it's the San Fernando Mall Association, Inc. Incorporated. This is a corporation, and granted, it's a nonprofit corporation, but it really is different than I think many of the community members had interpreted. Many community members interpreted this to be a collaboration of various businesses, some kind of democratic process amongst the businesses, but it really is simply a third-party vendor. There's obviously been dispute from other, from certain businesses in the mall, saying that the Mall Association, Inc. does not represent their interests. And obviously, there are people who disagree with that. This is about returning this process, to be fair. This is about returning this process, to be fair, so that all businesses are represented equally. When this organi-, sorry, when this improvement area started back in 1960, it was approved in 1968, it started in 1969. It actually operated for 15 years by the city council. So not only is there precedent for this, but it was actually created with that concept in mind. Somewhere around 1984, 1985, the city council decided to change that. But this was never made, this, this district was never made with the intention that a third-party vendor would control the, the financing or at least be responsible for the promotion of it. So I would like to return the monies and this district back to its original intent. I think that our last meeting was very elucidating. I think that it shed a lot of light on the process and the need for this to return to the city council so that we can have an ad hoc that engages all of the businesses in the district. Every single one, from the smallest ones to the biggest ones, to give them a voice on how we use these funds. That's my presentation. Obviously, I'm willing to, I had prepared a tremendous amount more anticipation that there were maybe dozens of people here. I had a response for every criticism concerned, so if there's any questions that you have, I came very well prepared for this item. And actually, as I wrap up this statement, as I've alluded to a couple of times, Mr. Ross, the treasurer, did indicate that they would be in agreement with this. He did ask us to pay for the last reimbursements that they had. And I do recommend that that be deferred, or not deferred, referred to the ad hoc, so we can take a look at that. The, there is a process in place for reimbursements. And so we want to examine that both with the city manager, or I'd like to examine that with the city manager and the city attorney, to make sure that we're following the right steps. So that's my short presentation.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, council member Garcia.
Given the time, I, we did all receive, and this is a, I'll give my, my copy to anyone. We did receive a letter from Tom Ross, Treasurer, San Fernando Mall Association, that says the Mall Association Board of Directors has agreed with the termination of the current, of the current agreement between the mall and the city. Given that that is uncontroversial, uncontested, I make a motion to terminate the current agreement between the mall and the city.
Okay, so.
And discuss the other items after that seem to need more of a discussion.
I second it.
Can I make a friendly amendment that we also change the name of the ad hoc on here? Let me see.
Well, let's just do this vote and then we can do the other.
Okay, so we'll start with this one first then. Do you want to see if there's any other discussion though?
I will, council member Lopez, yes. Just doing this one vote right now. We're gonna discuss.
On this, on this topic, because we can discuss all the other items after.
Okay, well, I just gonna be sure, you know, and design fully support the business. But the whole business itself, you know, the, especially the small business that been in the city for the last past 20, 40, 50 years and, you know, I spent a good amount of time. Have this deep conversation and I asked, and are you part of the Mall Association? And, you know, the majority share with me they never been part of the city. And I received a letter for one of the members for the council from the Mall Association. I'm not gonna make it public yet, unless, you know, somebody was requested. But yeah, I feel like it's our obligation to be transparent seeing how the funds are being shared. You know, the whole, the whole business in the cities of Fernando. And, you know, I hear to listen, you know, both sides. I just want to be clear, you know, that we don't take it any side, you know, in this situation. In my end, I want to be fair to every single other business here in the cities of Fernando and look ways to support the business. That's all.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
You know, given that we have this letter, I don't know that we would have had this letter in our hands if this item was not presented. It's somewhat disheartening to me to have this item. Although I do agree that the city should have control over how the funds are spent and that is in the agreement. I don't believe that we are doing right by all businesses, not just necessarily the Mall Association themselves, but across all businesses. And I'll say why. You know, we talked about last time distributing the funds, the 210 on light fixtures, which I do believe will make the mall look a lot better. But not necessarily did we open that discussion up for everyone to have an opinion on how we spend those funds. And if we're saying that we are going to do, are going to be business-friendly and business-forward, each individual council member or the city should put all those businesses in front first before making those decisions. And I don't know that, that occurred during that meeting. And I don't believe that it occurred during this meeting or across this item. So I will ask, well, did the ad hoc have another meeting with the Mall Association?
We had a meeting as an ad hoc. Now, as far as engaging the other businesses, I actually spoke to one business after our last meeting or the meeting. Was it our last meeting where we voted on the election? I think it was our last meeting, yeah. And I had told them, I had asked, and it wasn't Lupita, it's just a different business. I've spoken to many businesses there over the years. And I asked them, what do you think about having a process where we invite all the businesses into the room at the same time? We have a discussion, we find out who wants to move forward, who doesn't. And this business owner said that they are absolutely terrified by some of the people who approach them. They fear for their businesses, they fear for their ability to provide for their families. They fear about being targeted, they feel about potentially being physically attacked. And this person begged me to find a different way to address this without putting them and their families in jeopardy. And so I do feel that I have to take action that is consistent with the values of the city, with the residents, and the extremely vast majority of the businesses in that area. There are a number of anecdotes that I know throughout the year, and I came prepared to tell them all. I won't go through all of them or any of them, but I can tell you that there are a number of anecdotes from various people that validate these concerns. So that's why I'm willing to move forward with this, knowing that it does have the support of, of most of the community and most of those businesses. Maybe not all of them, but it's, but, but most of them for sure.
I'm glad that you're willing to help those that are asking for it. You know, I'm hopeful that if you speak to those individuals again, that you can share those information with other council members, just because I also think that it's important to see all the sides. Because I don't know that we have done that. And I will say that we didn't put it out for the whole business community in that sector. And I want to be able to listen to everyone. Those are my comments for now, thank you.
So we have a motion on the table.
We have a motion for 11B.
Yes, where we were to accept the letter here that there.
You want to repeat, do you have the motion down, Madam Clerk? We can just repeat the motion and it's seconded already?
The motion was by Councilmember Garcia, seconded by Councilmember Fajardo to terminate the agreement between.
I second it.
Okay, Mayor Mendoza seconded to terminate the agreement between the City of San Fernando and the San Fernando Mall Association, AKA Mall Assessment District, contract number 768 dated December 17th, 1984, and direct staff to issue a notice of termination as prescribed in the agreement and to take such other actions as may be necessary to close out the same.
So just to clarify, I, mine is just to terminate the agreement we have. If that fits with what that says, that's okay, but I wasn't.
That's the language that's probably needed because it references all the contracts.
Yeah, that, that's just covering all the bases on the termination.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Minister Lorio?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
And then can I make a motion for 11C? Which is to discuss and take out, to approve, oh, let me see, to reformulate the Mall Association, MOU, ad hoc committee to be the San Fernando Mall and Area B Funds Ad hoc Committee, where we will continue to discuss these items, outreach to the businesses in the area, and any remaining funds or balances that are referred to in Mr. Ross's letter. I will make a motion for that.
I would like to go around for comments.
Councilmember Garcia?
I am not opposed to the ad hoc, now that the, the MOU has been terminated, changing the name and continuing to outreach with businesses. I don't know that that extra layer is needed in analyzing requests for reimbursements, because that, I believe, will just be analyzed with staff and come to the council, and we'll do it here. But in engaging in that desire to engage all the businesses in the mall and make sure we have someone from council doing it, I am in agreement with that.
And so are you, I just want to clarify, are you saying though that the money from this district, so improvement area B funds, irrespective of the reimbursements, but improvement area B funds, you're saying you don't support the ad hoc discussing possible uses for them? Because that would be part of the engagement with the businesses, that hey, there's X amount of money. How do you, 200 businesses or however many businesses it is, how would, how would you recommend?
Okay, yeah, I would be in agreement with that.
So the only part that you're not in agreement with is potential reimbursements, which you want to be done?
That you guys assess it, but I, I was just gonna say.
We're not gonna make a decision on, it's gonna come back to city council.
I was just gonna say, and I would be in agreement with you guys, because you're doing the outreach, you're talking to the businesses. You're saying, hey, do you wanna, hey, do you want to, how do you want to see area B, or your, your taxes, your area B funds used? Of course, you want the feedback from the businesses, and if you're willing to do the legwork, I would support that. I don't think it needs to be a requirement that it go through the ad hoc committee though. If an idea comes, some amazing idea comes some other way to the city manager or to a council member, they can also present it. It doesn't need to be like filtered through the ad hoc.
I, that's all, no, I, I agree, but that's also the way that every ad hoc works, which is even if two people are working on it, you know, anyone can bring whatever they want, yeah.
Councilmember Lopez? Vice Mayor?
I'm in agreement with Councilmember Garcia in terms of the reimbursement. I do think that, I believe that the city manager and, you know, our city attorney of need be can go through those and make sure that they get reimbursed with Erica for the appropriate receipts are presented. I don't know that it needs to go through the ad hoc.
Yeah, I agree that, you know, I mean, you've done it all the time, it's never gone through an ad hoc. Any expenses that have been incurred, right, they should be expenses incurred, so.
Mayor, this is a little bit different, because there's actually a whole process that they are supposed to follow to, to get reimbursed. And so I don't think, I, I, I don't want to speak for staff, but my understanding is they want to follow what the actual agreement, you know, if there's a reimbursement, the expectation would be that at minimum, they would follow what the agreement says. And there are different steps where they have to come and present to actually the entire city council. If you don't want the ad hoc to review this, that's fine. I just know that it would be easier, I believe it would actually be easier for staff too. But if you want this to be done at a city council meeting instead, then I'm completely fine with that.
I don't, I don't know if we need an extra step to that. Is it necessary to add an additional step?
That's up to council, till the reimbursement request date gets submitted and we send them an email. I sent them an email back requesting for supporting documents for the request, because what they submit was just a list of items that they want reimbursement for, right? And to Councilmember Fajardo, discussion on process, the agreement required them to submit a budget plan and a work plan that define what is their work plan and what's their budget for the next year. So that was supposed to be done last year. So the reimbursement request now is for the spending that they have spent for this year, which technically should have been presented with a budget and work plan last year for council to approve their budget and work plan. So when a reimbursement request gets submitted, that reimbursement request is in a, in line with the approved budget and work plan. We don't have that budget and work plan approved by council. So right now, what we're doing is a reimbursement, but also a retroactive approval of their budget and work plan. So that's something we have to work with our city attorney, making sure that whatever we do is follow the agreement. And we have to review it.
So then we would, we would approve the work plan, you're saying?
So it'd have to, it would probably come back to the city council?
Okay, so yeah, go ahead.
To come back, it was going to come back to the city council anyways, but if you wanted two people to vet it in advance?
That's fine, they can do it all at one time then, right?
All right, so, oh, sorry, I didn't hear you, what did you say?
You could do it all at one time then, why do it in two steps, right?
Okay.
There was a motion, but I don't believe there was a second either. Yeah.
You make that motion like that?
Uh, that was, that was the plan, but we could remove the last part if you want.
But you said to review the, the, the plan, right? And also the receipt.
I can restate the motion to reformulate the Mall Association, MOU, ad hoc committee to be the San Fernando Mall and Area B Funds Ad hoc Committee. And if we want to define what the scope of it would be, it would be to converse with the businesses in the area B, sorry, in the improvement area B, on how those annual funds are used. And we will exclude discussion on the reimbursement, which will actually just come back to the city council.
A clarifying point, why would we, and maybe I just missed something. So the area B funds were the 210,000, correct? That's correct.
There's an annual area B funds, but that was what was presently in that account.
Right, so you're saying that you want to be able, for the future years?
Future years.
To discuss how those funds are allocated.
Sure, I mean, I presume that when the city created this in 1968, even though it was the city council determining how the funds were spent, I presume that there was probably some broad concept that they wanted to engage those businesses to, to do it. So it would basically be going back to that principle where we're reaching out to all, what is it, like 200 businesses in that, in that area or whatever it is?
Sure, and I'm okay with that as long as there's, like you said, maybe a process in that. So how are you going to collect the information?
So that's probably what we would discuss first, you know, what's the best process to do it? And we don't have all the answers here because we're going back to the original intent of how this was created. And it's about creating that process, how we reach out to the businesses.
So I think then before making a decision on how the area B funds will be spent or.
We won't make any decision, it has to come back to the city council.
Correct, yeah, but there should be a plan before we make this decision to change the ad hoc, that they will have this scope, and we don't know what your scope is going to be, is what I'm asking.
I think that sending out an email, letter, and a phone call is pretty standard, which would be sent to all the businesses in that area, asking them to meet at city hall with the ad hoc. Maybe having some coffee and some pastries and just talking about different ideas that they have.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I was just wanting to have clarification.
I mean, there's a concept in mind, but may, in the ad hoc, we'll maybe find out that out of the 200 some odd businesses, only 47 of them normally reply to emails, 15 of them have asked not to be called. So we're gonna find out all of these other little nuances during that process. But that is the broad general concept, email, phone call, and a letter.
I'll second.
Councilmember Fajardo, I think what the vice mayor was asking was the scope for the ad hoc. So I think in hearing is the scope for this ad hoc is really to engage the businesses in the San Fernando Mall to understand.
That was the first part, right? And then I think the second part right now was to clarify how we're going to engage with them.
Okay.
And so all we're deluding from is the reimbursement process, and that'll come back to the whole. And so all we're deleting from is the reimbursement process, and that'll come back to the whole city council.
That's correct, and that does not need to go to the ad hoc. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Minister Lorio?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So we'll move the rest of the items forward, yes? No, yeah. Good, okay.
We're continuing item number ten.
Item number ten?
Number twelve, number fourteen, and number fifteen, to our next meeting.
Are we done with number eleven, or are we doing the rest of it next meeting?
No, D was only there if needed, and it's not needed since there's very little comment, and then-
Number twelve, it take long?
And then A was just a discussion.
Number twelve? I don't know. You think twelve would take long? Number twelve, the trademark?
No, I can make the motion.
Okay, and so next item, discussion and consideration, trademark registration for Discover San Fernando? Is there any discussion?
Move.
Is there a motion? Second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia?
Yes.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Yes.
Vice Minister Lorio?
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So next item on the agenda is now staff communications, including commission updates.
Good evening, ma'am, mayor, member of the council. So tonight, the chief has picked a lucky number to give the update to council.
Lucky me, okay. So staff communications, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. So San Fernando together will be sponsoring an event, a special turkey giveaway, November nineteenth, at Las Palmas Park from four thirty to six thirty P.M. Again, that's November nineteenth, at Las Palmas Park, from four thirty to six thirty P.M. The Mexican consulate on wheels program has been extended to November fourteenth. Again, it's been extended to November fourteenth, and it's been a great success, and we're hoping that we can have the consulate here again soon. Foodzilla is November twenty-second, from five to nine P.M. in front of city hall. The holiday tree lighting ceremony will be December sixth, from five, from five P.M. to nine P.M. At the San Fernando, in the San Fernando Mall area. City hall will be closed tomorrow for a Veterans Day parade. What was that? Did I say Veterans Day? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's twenty-two thousand dollars, CJ. You're paying it, you're paying it.
So actually, I was thinking about, CJ, we have three members of our department participating, and that's what I'm, sorry, just, three members of our police department will be participating in the Veterans Day parade tomorrow. So that's where I got my wires crossed. Anyways, city hall will be closed tomorrow for the Veterans Day. Yeah. Boom. City hall will be closed to the public from December twenty-fifth to January fifth. The San Fernando Mall restoration will be completed hopefully by November seventeenth. And I want to congratulate our new corporals, Hector Torres, Mason Hill, Jeff Pack, Rahul Barahona, and Alex Lacer, who were all promoted last Saturday. And again, I think this is a big step forward in terms of getting the police department to where the community wants it to be, where the city council expects it to be. And lastly, a big shout out to all of our veterans. Thank you for your service, and we look forward to celebrating you tomorrow at the Veterans Day parade. Okay, thank you. The parade is on Laurel Canyon, and I believe the grandstand is at Laurel Canyon and Brand. That's where the, on, on San Fernando Mission is where it starts, right?
The, 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 the grand, the big stage, yeah, is on San Fernando.
Thank you.
South Brand. Okay. Okay, next item on the agenda, General City Council Board, Board Member Comments and Liaison Updates. Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you, it was very, a very eventful few weeks. I think I was able to attend the Kids First Learning Center grand reopening, which was lovely. It had a lot of people there, and it had a really good children's, like, mariachi group. My daughter wants to join now, and she keeps on asking. So I gotta figure that out. I also attended the Dia de los Muertos event for the city, but also for San Fernando High School, Noche de Muertos, and that was, like, huge as usual and wonderful. I think that our community recognition program was a great success. Thank you again to everyone who's worked on that. Our Foodzilla was a huge success, it was packed, and we just had rave reviews from that, so I'm very excited about that. I was able to congratulate those, some, a few of those new corporals, the, for the police department promotions. And then the other thing I'll mention is that I attended the California Contract Cities Association Executive Board meeting. In all, all these cities, we represent over eighty cities, everyone is struggling with the same issues, which is how to reach our state representatives about local issues and local control. So we're all, we're all working on that, and they are, we're actively working on, how do we lobby them? How do we not come to them when the bill's on the floor? And, like, beg them not to vote for it, but engage them earlier. So I'm looking forward to bringing back those ideas for us to participate and collaborate, because we're a small city, but when we're joined with dozens and dozens of L.A. County cities, we can become more powerful. And then SCAG, I know the Vice Mayor was on the meeting, too. The Community and Economic Human Development meeting was all about downtowns and refurbishing them, and I have a lot of great ideas and PowerPoints that I can, we should visit Lancaster. I mean, apparently, it's beautiful. And they just do things like, when they do their street lamps, which look old fashions there, like, we made sure they all have electrical, so when we do our festivals, you could just plug in. And just little ideas like that, that you can, that we can glean from. I think Pomona has really built up their downtown, too. So lastly, I did graduate from the Well Untapped Fellowship Program, so that was- That was exhausting, I don't know how you did it, with a baby here and a baby here. But it was, it was a lot of travel, but I'm actually looking forward to touring our water department and our wells and everything, and that's one thing I haven't done yet, but I'm looking forward to, so thank you.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yeah, my final comment's gonna be on Carlos Manso, who was killed November first in Mexico. And I'm gonna make my comments in Spanish and English, because I believe a lot of people are looking to this meeting, and I'm just gonna start by saying, en Michoacán, no nacimos para callarnos. Nacimos para luchar. No nacimos para doblarnos. Nacimos para levantarnos. México duele. Michoacán duele. Uroapan duele. En Michoacán, we are not born to stay silent. We're born to fight. We were not born to back down. We were born to race. Carlos Manso, rest, rest in peace. Me- Mexico hurts. Michoacán hurts. Uroapan hurts. Justice, justice, justice for Carlos Manso. Sometimes politicians put their lives in the line, and sometimes we make decisions that people get against us. And hopefully, you know, I place a letter in our, in all the, our council members, and make it public, to request our president from Mexico to respond and, and to respond and bring justice to this incredible president from Mexico, who was killed in the duty. He was fighting for the mafia from Mexico, and the government left him alone. Now, his wife take the lead and be the president from Uro- Uroapan, Michoacán. Rest in peace.
Councilmember Fajardo?
Well, thank you, Councilmember, for those words, it's much appreciated. I would also like to close today in memory of Anthony Duarte. He is a former school board member, for, a school board member of Hacienda La Puente Unified School District. He was also very well-known in the LGBTQ+ community. He did pass away last week at a, you know, fairly young age. I don't know his exact age, but in his forties, and he left behind a partner and a son. So if we can close in his honor. I also want to clarify one comment that I made, although I discussed, or although I mentioned a discussion that I had, and I said that there was anecdotes of some of these things happening, there aren't any anecdotes with physical harm. The other items, I have a number of anecdotes for, but I want to make clear that there aren't stories of physical harm out there. And so we had already moved on to the next item. I also wanted to mention that we did discuss waste hauling at the ad hoc as well, and that will probably become, come before us, the city council, one of our next meetings in terms of the option to start an RFP process. It is a potentially year-long process, or something around there, so staff will come forward with additional information. And lastly, I just want to reiterate how happy I was with the presentation today on the police department. I know that this is a pretty monumental step in improving things. But I, I can't help but feel that it's unfortunate that it has to take so long for some of these things to happen. I've told people throughout the years that up until recently, I felt like I was in an asylum. I'm going to the beach, and I'm commenting on the water, and for years, I'm having people say, there's no water there, what are you talking about? And then more people come and say there's no water. And you have it right in front of you, and everyone's saying that there's no water, and you're there at the beach. And it is this terrible feeling to feel that you're trying to fight injustices, and knowing that no one is willing to help you. And the really ironic part, it's that the people who I think have helped me the most are people who I didn't campaign for. And they just got elected on their own with grassroots support, and here we are, finally chartering a path forward. But I do hope that, you know, this, that when council members bring valid points forward, that we really give those items the consideration, because even my first year back on the council, when I mentioned during the budget that the community wants more patrol, it was almost this crazy thing where I'm trying to dictate the police department's duties, I'm not respecting management. The city just wants more patrol. And when we let outside, you know, it's important to let the public speak, for the, for there to be a free press, but there is sometimes unclear information that gets transmitted, and I think that it makes the process a lot harder when we're trying to put our best foot forward and try to have an efficient government. So fingers crossed that this is the first step in a long journey of, of repairing, or at least a three-year journey of repairing the department, but I'm so happy for today's meeting. And I hope that, you know, everyone is just as relieved as I am, and I look forward to working to, to make this vision a reality.
Vice Mayor Salorio?
Thank you, yes, I want to share my congratulations to Councilmember Garcia. It definitely takes up a lot of your time, a lot of travel, and you're up and down California, and you're making time for these trips, and it's not just one day, it's multiple days, and it's time away from your family. Even if you take them with you, it's time away from your family. So thank you for your commitment in, you know, participating in the cohort and bringing back all that information to San Fernando, because it's truly valuable, thank you. And a special congratulations to our corporals that have just been promoted. This is wonderful news to our city, and just wanted to, you know, remind our community that we have new leadership in all aspects, and we are continuing to work forward. We are continuing and looking forward to a better path for San Fernando. So I appreciate all the hard work from everyone. I was able to join New Horizons for Youth Gala fundraiser. They're, they provide job training, education, and housing for adults with disabilities, and that's a true passion of mine across my career. I also would like to take this moment to invite all of council here, and I'll continue to remind you, especially the specific date. In February, Independent Cities Association, which I am the president-elect for, I am hosting the winter seminar in February in Santa Barbara. And it is a beautiful place, it's right in front of the beach, and I'm excited to have you all join, and possibly have staff join as well for some of the, some of the seminar. Thank you.
Well, I had, last Friday, I attended the Glen Oaks Christian Harvest Festival, because Councilmember Garcia asked me to, because she wasn't able to attend, because she was at her well program, right? So anyway, I had a great-
Wanted you.
Oh, they wanted me. I had a great time, I had a lot of fun. Had a camel, and they had a little petting zoo, they, because we were able to feed the, the, not a, a farm, a petting farm, yeah. But it was, it was really nice, they were very nice there. And I, you know, I did attend, we had our ad hoc for them. It is called the World Cup Olympic California One Seventy-Five and America Two Fifty Celebrations Ad hoc Committee. We met last week. So anyway, and then, you know, I went to three Dia de los Muertos events. It was the Rec Park and our San Fernando High School. Amazing event at San Fernando High School. Ours was amazing, you know, I know our, our staff works really hard, and they, they did a phenomenal job with all the entertainment and every, all the booths that they had, it was, it was great. And, but San Fernando High School did collaborate with, like, they had, like, four different schools there. And the entertainment from the kids, all the students that were, you know, providing the entertainment, the art students, you know, they have different rooms, they're showing their artwork. And then I went to the cemetery, San Fernando Mission Cemetery, that collaborated with Monica Rodriguez, and they had a really good presentation there as well. So I was there the whole time, you know, I stayed till the end. But, I mean, I was exhausted, my stuff, then I had to go dancing on the weekend. Conica was looking for me. She wasn't sure where I was. But anyway, it, it was busy, but all great. And, and what's great about it, you get to meet a lot of different people from the community and, and talk and share about different things that we're doing here in the city, and they get to meet you and, and, you know, ask you questions of, of what we're doing, how we're handling things. And, and that's the beauty of, you know, being able to be a council member, you know, so. Anyway, I think we're all done, right? So given that, this meeting is adjourned.